Madam Chair, we are live and you may gather in the meeting when ready.
Thank you.
Good morning. This special session of the Federal Election Commission will please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Commission's hearing on proposed changes to FEC regulations regarding the use of campaign funds for candidate compensation. Today's hearing will take place in a hybrid in-person and virtual format, and we are live right now on the FEC's YouTube channel. I'm Dara Lindenbaum, Chair of the Commission this year. Sitting beside me on the dais today are Commissioners Shawna Broussard, Alan Dickerson, Trey Trainer, and Ellen Weintraub. Our Vice Chairman Sean Cooksey is unable to be here. Also at the dais are Acting General Counsel Lisa Stevenson and our Deputy Staff Director for Management and Administration Katie Hagan-Moffin. I'd like to thank Commissioners Broussard and Dickerson, who have resurrected our rulemaking efforts at the FEC, and particularly to Commissioner Broussard, who has advanced important rulemaking initiatives. I would also like to thank the Office of General Counsel's Policy Team, the FEC's Operations Technology and Commission Secretary, and Press Divisions for managing the logistics that are making today happen. Your hard work and diligence are appreciated and do not go unnoticed. This hearing follows a petition for rulemaking submitted by a former candidate for Congress, Nabeela Islam, in March 2021. Running for office often requires a full-time effort, and many people cannot afford to have a job or pay for additional childcare in order to do so. For those without substantial wealth, running for office is a dream and not a realistic endeavor. I'm excited to work to find ways to make running for office more accessible. Today, we're talking about proposed rules the FEC published in the Federal Register on December 12, 2022. These proposed rules aim to find practical and responsible solutions for candidates to use campaign funds to support themselves and their families. In response to this notice for proposed rulemaking, we have received a dozen thoughtful written comments from a range of industry groups, labor unions, nonprofit organizations, political committees, and recent candidates for federal office. We learned so much from your comments, and we're so glad many of you have decided to also join us today for this hearing. Now, I'd like to invite my fellow Commissioners to provide their opening remarks for today's hearing. First, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Dickerson. Commissioner Dickerson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. I also want to begin somewhat similarly by thanking our Policy Division for all their hard work in bringing today's event together. Today's hearing builds on last month's successful hearing on our audit procedures and falls upon last year's successful adoption of an updated Internet Disclaimer Regulation after more than a decade of false starts. I also want to specifically thank Commissioner Broussard and Chair Lindenbaum for their leadership in resurrecting our morbid policy portfolio. And I want to thank our witnesses for taking time out of their busy lives to inform our deliberations. Our decisions are not improved by being made in a vacuum. Turning to today's topic, I have read all the comments that were submitted. By and large, they support an expansion of our existing regulations permitting limited salaries to be paid to candidates from their campaign funds. I understand the policy arguments for doing so, and I anticipate we will hear a good deal about why candidates for federal office should have greater freedom to pay themselves salaries during their campaigns. But I do think we need to remember the larger context in which the Act. In passing the Federal Election Campaign Act and creating this agency, Congress had as its primary interest, and I'll quote in Supreme Court in Buckley versus Belaya, "the prevention of corruption and the appearance of corruption." In the needed aftermath of the Watergate scandals, yet that was a keen and very real concern. In my view, the central anti-corruption innovation of the Federal Election Campaign Act as it currently exists is the candidate committee. By law, and somewhat simplifying, candidates must create a single committee to manage their campaign activities. The funds used in that campaign must all be deposited with that committee, and none of those funds may be used for personal use. The idea, in other words, is to prevent commingling of funds in a way that might facilitate corrupt transactions and allow candidates and office holders to enrich themselves. It's an effort to prevent candidates from accessing any quid and thereby prevent them from entering into any quid pro quo. The statute barring personal use explains that any use of a contribution or donation is illegal if it is used, quoting from the statute, "to fulfill any commitment, obligation, or expense of a person that would exist irrespective of the candidate's election campaign." And it lists per se purchases that constitute personal use, including a home mortgage, rent, or utility payment, a clothing purchase, and payment for a household item. Presumably, these are just the sort of expenses candidates will pay for using any salary they collect for campaign funds. So I hope our witnesses today will help us navigate a central legal question. Why is it an explicit violation of law to pay one's rent with campaign funds, but acceptable to do so if those funds are limited in salary? Second, our notice of proposed rulemaking lists no fewer than six alternative ways of calculating a cap on candidate salaries. And the notice raises a number of ancillary questions, including when a salary may be paid and for how long. As several commenters have noted, a number of these approaches would be difficult to administer, and several comments suggested that candidate compensation be capped at the level of pay for the office sought: $174,000, or nearly two and a half times the national median family income for members of Congress; or $400,000 for the presidency, which would place a candidate in the top one for 1% to 2% of earners nationwide. I hope today's hearing will explore whether compensation at those high levels is necessary to facilitate broader candidate participation and appropriate, given our anti-corruption mission. And I look forward to our witnesses' assistance in finding a workable approach that gives effect to the law Congress has instructed us to administer. With those preliminary thoughts, Madam Chair, I thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from today's witnesses.
Thank you. Commissioner Broussard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always get in trouble, so I'm gonna make sure this mic is up before they send me the personal message. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to thank all of our panelists testifying today for taking the time to appear and provide their insight and experiences. The issue, the ability for candidates to use campaign funds for compensation while they are campaigning, is very important. It has both micro and macro implications. On a micro level, it's about opening the possibility of running for federal office for a stay-at-home parent, a disabled veteran, a young American right out of school, a blue-collar worker. On a macro level, it enables our democracy to become more perfect by creating opportunities for our federal elected bodies to reflect the current demographics of our nation. I'd like to especially recognize Nabeela Islam, who will be speaking on the afternoon panel, and thank her for submitting her petition for rulemaking in 2021. Senator Islam's experiences as a candidate for U.S. Representative in the U.S. House of Representatives in 2020 kicked off this rulemaking. But I believe today we will hear that her experiences, unfortunately, are not unique. A statistic cited in both the petition for rulemaking and in the comments received noted that working-class jobs, defined as manual labor, service industry, and clerical jobs, make up over 50% of the U.S. economy, yet only 2% of the members of Congress have working-class backgrounds. Commenters noted that individuals with working-class backgrounds may have less flexible jobs and work schedules that do not easily accommodate campaigning than those in a higher echelon. And these individuals oftentimes have less accumulated wealth, which can result in a candidate deciding to forego income while campaigning. Multiple commenters, in response to the 2002 final rules and the current NPRM, emphasized that incumbent members of Congress running for reelection or election to another office continue to receive their full salary and benefits while they're campaigning. In short, there are real disparate barriers to entry for many Americans to run for office. These barriers have a direct impact on the diversity in our elected representatives. I'm excited that today we're going to hear from candidates and officeholders, academics, and representatives of labor organizations, think tanks, and party committees. Collectively, they bring legal expertise, policy perspectives, and personal experience, all of which are invaluable as the Commission works on final rules. I'm grateful to be able to hear from each panelist today, and I'm looking forward to working together with my colleagues as we complete this important rulemaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank the staff for taking time to put together this hearing. I definitely want to thank the witnesses for taking their time to come in and enlighten us with your thoughts. And most importantly, I want to thank the people who publicly commented. I think that's the most critical thing that we as Commissioners see, is the comments that come in to give us information and details that we can actually dig into. So I appreciate that. I want to echo a little bit what Commissioner Dickerson said with regard to where we are as far as the state of the law. In preparing for this hearing, I went back and reread part of The Federalist, and when you look at the, somewhere around the 50s, 60s range, the authors there talk about the legislature being one that's very close to the people and one where legislators would live under the laws that they made and go back. And we look at the history of our country. Prior to the Civil War, you saw legislators who only served at most two terms. It's really only since the rise of permanent committees in Congress that we've seen the continual reelection of congressmen to office. And I think that's part of what gives rise to the disparity that Commissioner Broussard was talking about, is that this perpetual need to gain seniority, which means that we have really in front of us a novel legal question. But unfortunately, I don't think that the Federal Election Commission is the place where this conversation ought to be taking place. This is a question I think that Congress has to address if it is, in fact, something that is important. Because for me, the salaries that we currently allow under our regulation are the epitome of personal use. And I think we're far beyond the statutory limits that we have right now with our current regulations. And I think pushing those out even farther puts us in even more legal jeopardy. So I'm very interested in the comments that we have today. I hope that having this public hearing will allow for a larger public conversation about this, and appreciate the time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Broussard. Sorry, Commissioner Weintraub.
I take that as a compliment, and I am happy to join and endorse the eloquent comments of my colleague Commissioner. I'm delighted that we're here today to consider this important topic. I want to thank, like my colleagues, all of the commenters. I want to particularly thank the petitioner, Nabeela Islam, now Georgia State Senator Islam, who is, in a sense, responsible for all of us being here today. We were unable to respond in time in 2020 to her advisory community request regarding paying for healthcare with campaign funds, but she persisted and filed a rulemaking petition that sparked the process we are all here to discuss today. I see this rulemaking as, in a sense, a continuation of a series of decisions that the Commission has made over the last number of years, particularly focusing on a number of areas we issued about childcare expenses being paid for with campaign funds. I'm proud of those decisions. And I want to thank, in that context, Nabeela Shirley, who submitted one of those advisory community requests, and who is with us today as a witness. I think the Commission has a real opportunity to improve on its previous work in this area and craft a candidate salary regulation that candidates can use effectively. When the Commission set these rules in 2002, it put tight restrictions on the salaries candidates could pay themselves. They were right to be cautious at the outset. And I say as somebody who has throughout my career been a fierce defender of the personal use restrictions and a fierce enforcer of those restrictions, that I believe that these rules are consistent with those restrictions. They have been in effect for, as I said, over 20 years, and they have never been challenged. But what we've seen over the last 20 years is that the Commission drew the rules perhaps a little too tightly. Salary caps and time limits that were imposed have made it difficult for candidates to usefully avail themselves of this regulation. And the structure of the salary caps tilts in favor of candidates who earned higher salaries before running for office. So one of the key questions for us to answer here today, and as we move forward with this rulemaking, is what is the appropriate salary for a candidate? Should it vary based on previous employment or location? We do need to guard against potential fraud. But is there any reason to think that a teacher, a plumber, or an at-home parent isn't as trustworthy as a banker or a lawyer? The time limits on the salaries have also proved for some to be unworkable because they simply couldn't run for office within the time period if they could draw the salary. So now we're here to reexamine these regulations with an eye towards striking the right balance between usefulness and preventing abuse. And as we discuss all of this, it's worth keeping in mind that none of this is taxpayer funds. Every dollar that a candidate might pay themselves in salary is a dollar they had to raise themselves. And every dollar that a candidate might pay themselves is a dollar that they can't use on paid media or field work with staff to win the race, which is actually the point of the endeavor. And this gives candidates plenty of reason to be vicious in what they pay themselves. And all of it will be disclosed. Candidates have to answer to their opponents, to the public, and the press for drawing a salary. I want to thank our policy staff, their hard work in helping us to get the NPRM together for this rulemaking. I think it presents the options we're considering quite clearly. We have heard in the comments from a range of organizations, from labor organizations to the National Federation of Business, from the GCCC and the NRCC, and all supported or expanding in some fashion the ways that candidates can draw a salary while campaigning. And I think many commenters have emphasized the point that Commissioner Broussard made earlier, that this will expand the range of individuals who can seriously consider running for office, and will ultimately make us, hopefully, more representative democracy and will have officeholders who better represent the range of experience in the population. Now, all of our commenters agreed that we should do something. They didn't agree on every detail, but we don't usually see that degree of agreement among commenters from such diverse perspectives. And I hope that will give us some momentum to bring this project across the finish line. I am really looking forward to hearing what the witnesses have to tell us, and I'll thank everyone who participated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all. All right, as for the logistics, we have a total of 11 witnesses, and there will be two panels. Each panel will have a mix of in-person and virtual participants. At the beginning of each panel, the witnesses will provide up to five minutes of opening remarks. And following the remarks, the remaining time will be reserved for question and answer. And the first panel will start now. The second one will start at 2:00 PM after the lunch break with the ultimate goal of ending today's hearing by 3:45. So we're going to start with our first panel. Before I introduce the first speaker, I want to ask everybody who's here in person to speak directly into the microphone. Our court reporter, who is transcribing the hearing, is with us virtually, so speaking directly to the microphone assures us that we will have an accurate transcription of your remarks. For those who are joining us virtually, please keep your Zoom chat open. We'll use that chat to notify you when time is running out. Thank you. And with that, our first panel is going to kick off. We have a little bit of a change on how we're going to do this one. Our first panelist is United States Congressman Maxwell Frost from Florida. He's here to provide opening remarks, and he'll be available for a few questions afterwards. So Congressman Frost, welcome, and floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you all the Commissioners for allowing me to testify today on the petition for rulemaking to improve candidate salary rules. My name is Maxwell Alejandro Frost. I'm a freshman member of the United States Congress representing Orlando's Florida's 10th Congressional District, the community that's raised me, Central Florida. Less than four months ago, I was a candidate myself. And so I have firsthand experience with the struggles of being a candidate, but also being a working-class candidate. Prior to filling my paperwork for Congress in August of 2021, I was working for the National Organization, Gun Violence Prevention Organization, March for Our Lives, as the National Organizing Director. And for someone my age, I was pulling in a generous salary. But I quickly realized that in order to run a competitive race, I'd have to quit my job, give up my salary, and devote my 110% self to the campaign. And so I put aside savings and planned to work part-time as an Uber driver, but quickly realized that the savings didn't last, especially with the rising rent costs in Orlando and the cost of living. And I found out that I couldn't find enough hours in the day to run for Congress and also drive Uber, which was unsustainable in and of itself. I mean, I'd be campaigning from 8:00 or 9:00 AM in the morning, 10:00, 11:00 PM at night, go Uber till 2:00 AM. And it's just not, you know, it's not sustainable, folks. And even though I quit my job and started my campaign in August of 2021, under the current rules, I wasn't eligible to take a paycheck from my campaign until mid-June of 2022. And current colleagues of mine, with earlier primaries, were able to draw salaries sooner because that was the qualification period, but it depends on the state you're in. Some as early as January, but mine wasn't until June, which creates a not equitable system. You know, once I won my election, I stopped being able to receive a paycheck from the campaign for November, December. And then my first paycheck for being a member of Congress doesn't arrive until the beginning of February. And so in the course of a year and a half, I had only received a paycheck for about four months of that year and a half. In that time period, I ran up a lot of debt that I wouldn't have had if I didn't run for office. And the consequences of that debt was a very damaged credit score that I still have and that I'm still working on. You know, since being elected, you know, I've made news for being the first Gen Z member of Congress to be elected and for being denied an apartment I applied to because of my low credit score. And I've been praised for the first part and criticized for the second part. And I'm here to tell you that these two things are intertwined. I did overcome the odds, but there are often consequences when you participate in a system that's not set up for you. Voters regularly share that they'd like candidates from all walks of life. And if we make these easy changes to the system, we can ensure that more people can participate in democracy in voting, but also being candidates. And so I'm asking the Commission to first set a daily rate that is determined by taking 100% of the minimum office holder's salary and dividing that amount by 365 days per year, basing the cap off of previous income levels or a minimum wage that varies across states, or even the 50% of the minimum office holder's salary. I think it overcomplicates the process and disadvantages working-class people without large savings. And so the way the system works now, including reducing candidate compensation for other earned income, has not seen widespread abuses, more people running for office just to take a salary. Second, allow candidates to take compensation for benefits that the candidate also provides to staff along with safeguards. Potentially, losing health insurance and no longer being able to provide dependent care are two of the largest impediments for working-class people running for office. The third one is candidates should be able to draw a salary the moment they begin their campaign. Working people don't have the luxury of going without salary until mid-June in Florida. And so if they want to be competitive, they can't hold off announcing for that long. Part of the reason I won is because I started early. Part of the reason I won is I dedicated my entire time to that campaign. And I don't have a family that I have to support. I was able to slum it out for a year and a half, but it was difficult. I put myself in a bad financial place. But I'll be honest, if I had a family to take care of, I probably would have had the dropout midway through the race. And people know my story because I was successful. But imagine all the other six stories of people dropping out of races that exist across this country that we'll never even hear of because of the way the system is built. And then fourth, candidates who win should be able to draw a salary until they begin the job that they've won. You know, part of the problem is campaigns oftentimes act as a filter, and working-class people can't really get to the end of it. But even if you win, in my case and a lot of other cases we've seen, and it becomes difficult to even be seated, right? Find a place in DC and be able to start your job. We want our candidates that become members of Congress to be in the best place financially, taking care of their families, and having a place to live so they can focus on their job, which is representing their constituents. You know, after winning my election, I immediately was summoned to DC in less than a week to begin taking orientation classes to start the process of setting up my office. And having that anxiety of not knowing where I was going to live, if I would have a place to live, it did impede on my ability to focus 110% on my job. And I think it's for the betterment of the constituents and our government if we ensure that our public servants have a place to live and have the money that they need to live so they can focus on serving the people. And with that, I yield back. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your comments. And I'll just start by thanking you for being so open and transparent about this issue. One of the things that we've, or at least that I've certainly seen as we've gone through this and through the years is that people often don't talk about their lack of money. Sometimes it's viewed as, you know, embarrassing or there's some lack of power associated with it. But instead, what we are seeing is new members of Congress talking about this issue, and that has also helped spark this rulemaking. So thank you. I hope that your comments will also encourage others to be transparent and open and honest about the process, putting a face to what we are trying to do here is incredibly helpful. With that, I know you have a couple of minutes. So Commissioners, if anyone has any questions that they would like to ask.
Commissioner Dickerson. Thank you. Congressman, thank you very much. That was very helpful. And I think it gets at one of the issues here, which is the timing of this, which I think is important. My question is almost amusing. I mean, as I tried to flag in my opening, now, part of the concern here isn't necessarily a disagreement on what an ideal policy outcome would be, but a concern about what the Commission's legal authority is that's been given to us by Congress, a truly legal concern. So I guess my question to you is, you know, given your experience, do you have any interest or anticipation of sponsoring legislation that would accomplish what you set out as a possible policy outcome here? Or do you have views on the authority of the Commission under the existing statute absent a change in the law?
Yeah, well, thank you so much for your question, Commissioner. And I believe that the Commission does have the authority to make these changes and the changes that would be useful for both the constituents at home and our democracy in general. And so hoping that the Commission will be able to make these changes so that way we have a more accessible democracy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Broussard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question, well, thank you, Representative. I appreciate the time that you've taken for this, and I know you're busy and working for the people. But you pretty much answered all my questions. But the question I have is that you made reference that the ability for an office holder or elected individual to be able to collect a salary until they take office. What about in the opposite, for someone who has run for office and is not successful? Would you see it reasonable to be able to collect some salary for a period of winding down period? Do you have any perspective on that?
I think that's a great idea. And, you know, I was actually just on a, I just did a Codel to Japan and was able to speak with a lot of the members of the Japanese National Dai. And we had conversations about their races and the way it works in Korea. They have an interesting thing in Korea where whether you win or lose, if you reach a certain percentage, there's a threshold for the vote share, you're able actually to be reimbursed for certain expenses and have some money come in afterwards, even if you lose. And this is a great point because, I'll tell y'all, there's a light at the end of the tunnel for me now because I'm collecting a great salary. And I'm gonna, I will be able to pay off my debts. I will be in a better place at the end of two years. If I wouldn't have been successful, I would be in a very, very, very bad situation right now financially and in my personal life, just because I wanted to, you know, take the step to put my name forward to serve my community. And so I think that's a great point, and I think that's a great solution. I think people should be able, even if they lose, to have something come in so they can have the help that they need.
Thank you. With that, we will let me get back to your work. Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you so much, and thank you all the Commissioners. Have a great day.
Next up, we have Lawrence Gold, an attorney at the law firm of Trister Ross Shadler &amp; Gold. He is here with us in person. Mr. Gold, just a reminder to keep your mic close, and floor is yours.
I see if you could turn on his mic for us, please.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the AFL-CIO and to reflect the views of our commenting partners, Ask Me AFT and SEIU. Together, these labor organizations represent 17 million working men and women throughout the United States in virtually every occupation there is. And all of these organizations have sponsored programs to encourage their members to run for office at all levels. In our experience, persisting barriers to candidacy have included not just the financial cost of a campaign itself, but also the opportunity cost of having but also the opportunity cost of having to maintain a full-time job while campaigning, especially against much wealthier primary opponents or especially at the federal level incumbents who are able to campaign as much as they wish without regard to the Act's prohibition against doing so unpaid working time. This disadvantage in available campaign time has no relationship to the merit of the candidate. And incumbency remains a powerful campaign advantage. Just look at 2022. Ninety-seven point five percent of all House incumbents on the November ballot won. Just nine of these three hundred sixty-five members lost their election. And no incumbent senator lost his or her election last year. The last time that occurred was nineteen fourteen. Just this morning, I read a Politico story titled, "National Republicans Are Looking For Senate Candidates Who Are Filthy Rich." It quoted Senator John Kennedy, quote, "In politics as in life, money doesn't buy happiness, but poverty doesn't buy a damn thing." Well, you can be much better off than poor and still not afford to surrender a paycheck in order to run for a senate or house seat. And Republicans don't have a monopoly on this kind of candidate recruitment. When I participated in a bath of the AFL-CIO in the initial rulemaking on this issue twenty-one years ago, the central issue was whether a campaign paying a salary to its candidate constituted impermissible permissible personal use. The Commission correctly resolved that question, the decisive no, and its rationale for doing so remained sound. A salary paid to a candidate would be in return for the candidate's services provided to the campaign, and the necessity of that salary would not exist irrespective of the candidacy, quote unquote. No intervening experience or law undermines that conclusion or the wisdom of a formal rule to, to concretize it in order to ameliorate the Act's necessary prohibition against employer subsidization subsidization of an employee's candidacy by permitting the campaign itself to become a substitute employer. The issue today is whether to change the key parameters of the current rule. So let me turn to those specifics and summarize the written comments about them. First, the duration of compensation. The current rule recognizes the period from the state law primary filing date to the earlier of the end of candidacy or the general election. We support a period extending from the filing of either the candidate's Form Two Statement of Candidacy or Form One Statement of Organization until the earlier of the end of the candidate's active candidacy or their office swearing in. The primary filing date is simply too late to permit meaningful use of a campaign salary, as Representative Frost just explained. Campaigns often begin formally even in the year before an election, as his did. It's better to peg the beginning date to that reality. A survey of the 2022 primary filing dates demonstrates why the current rule starts the permissible salary period too late. On, on average, most pre-primary filing dates occur about three months uh before the primary election. Specifically, thirty-six states last year set that filing date two to three months before the primary, thirteen, three to four months before the primary, and it's mattering even earlier. And looking at the election calendar overall, twenty-one of those primary filing dates occurred in March, eight in April, four in May, nine in June, three in July, and just six before March. And extending the potential salary period for a winning candidate from the general election until the candidate assumes office on usually January three recognizes the unlikelihood that a winning candidate will secure ethically and politically acceptable employment during this brief interval. Second, the amount of compensation. The current rule caps a candidate's salary at the lesser of the candidate's earned income during the calendar year preceding candidacy or the minimum salary of the incumbent federal office holder. And in either case, less any actual earned income of the candidate otherwise during the salary campaign period. We support untethering the calculation from the candidate's own earning experience and setting simply a cap at the minimum annual congressional salary, now one hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, and like now, with an offset of any actual earned income of the candidate otherwise during the salary campaign period. This proposal has these virtues. It's uniform across all jurisdictions, just as the congressional salary is set. It's clear, workable, and easy to administer and enforce. It does not disadvantage individuals with low means who earned little or unemployed, or caring for loved ones, or students, or experienced similar low-paid situations during the previous year. The current rule simply perpetuates the problem that gave rise to the rule in the first place. It deters potential fraud with respect to proving private earnings. And it recognizes that there is no objective standard to measure a particular candidate's true opportunity cost of candidacy or what is, quote, "fair compensation for candidacy activities," where there's no actual historical marketplace as a point of reference. And as with any salary, the political context of the particular campaign will influence the decision as to whether to pay a salary, when to do so, and how much to pay relative to the cap. Finally, non-monetary compensation, employee benefits such as health and life insurance, retirement funding, and dependent care costs. Under the current rule, none are permissible, except per several advisory opinions, dependent care costs that are, quote, "the direct costs of campaign activity." The latter are not inherently employment-related and are available also to incumbents. We support codifying dependent care costs, as explained more fully in our comments. With respect to health, life, retirement, and the like, we support the principle that benefits that are typically connected to employment should not be considered personal use of campaign funds any more than the salary itself. The fact is that a majority of Americans still secure these benefits as an incident of employment, particularly health insurance. And enabling a campaign to provide these benefits would be consistent with setting the permissible salary at the congressional standard. There's no sound reason to quantify the value of those benefits, cap them, or seek parity or any other relationship with those incident to congressional employment. Such an undertaking would make the regulation unduly burdensome for campaigns and for the Commission with little, if any, public reward. There are innumerable kinds of benefit policies. A campaign's access to any of them is limited, in any event, by its temporary nature, and all payments for benefits will be publicly disclosed, disclosed, and subject to the same political marketplace discussed above. We do support one restraint. As proposed in Compensation Definition Alternatives A and B in the NPRM, the provision of an employment benefit to the candidate should be permissible only if the campaign also provides it to its staff as both a hedge against abuse and a guarantee of some regularity. And that's how many employee benefit plans lawfully have to operate anyway. The rule should provide, though, that if the candidate is the only employee, as could be the case, then the campaign nonetheless may provide benefits to the candidate alone. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to appear and welcome your questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Dr. Lopez, an attorney with the Elias Law Group, with us in person. Lopez, remind her to keep your microphone close. Our tech folks, can you guys turn on? There we go. Thank you.
Alrighty, good morning. Um, I want to start by thanking the Commission for allowing me to join in this incredibly important conversation. Um, I'm here today on behalf of the Democratic Senatorial Campaign Committee, which is a national political party committee dedicated to lessening Democrats in the United States Senate. Um, it is a core belief of the DSCC that the strength of our democracy depends on the ability of Americans from every socioeconomic background to run for elected office. Current Commission regulations make it harder. It's not impossible for lower-income Americans to run for office, and they can be amended. I will say personally that I have served as counsel for over forty candidates for the United States Senate. I have seen time and time again how the demands of a campaign are only encasing, and it has quite frankly become a full-time job. I've also been a part of very hard conversations with potential candidates, like had to explain that the current regulations severely limit their financial ability to run for office. Those are painful conversations to have as a lawyer with someone that you think should have a shot to run for office. So with all that in mind, um, I'm here today to advocate for a couple of specific changes to the regulation. A candidate for federal office should be able to draw a salary for the entire candidacy process from when they trigger candidacy, even if that means fifteen days before the Form One is filed. I would slightly amend that request because I, that fifteen-day period is very hectic. It's short. Um, and up until when they're sworn in or they are defeated. The total amount of compensation should not be tied to prior income levels or to the minimum wage. Instead, the cap should simply be tied to the minimum salary for the office job. This mechanism evens the playing field and ensures that candidates are not pitted differently depending on where they live, what their minimum wage is, or their past employment history, but still guards against abuse. A candidate should be able to receive the same healthcare benefits provided to campaign staff as well as dependent child care and speaking with the Commission's advisory opinions on that topic. Either benefit should count against the compensation cap. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm very grateful to the Commission to take up this moment.
Thank you so much. Um, and next up, we have Neil McKeja, uh, the Executive Director of Indian American Impact and a law professor at the University of Pennsylvania. He is participating with us virtually. Floor is yours.
Hi, thank you so much uh for having me. I very much appreciate this opportunity. Uh, thank you in particular to Senator uh Islam for raising this uh petition uh now two years ago. Um, my name is Neil McKeja. I am a lecturer at the University of Pennsylvania Law School. Currently on leave, I've served as Executive Director of Indian American Impact, supporting uh training candidates uh who are running for office uh as well um as helping uh advise them uh in campaigns generally. I've been a candidate uh myself. I'm actually currently a candidate for local office, not under uh the jurisdiction of this uh agency uh for County Commissioner in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Uh, today I speak in that capacity, though, as someone who has advised uh really hun- hundreds of candidates and, and uh are and being someone who is familiar with uh what candidacy entails uh in all of its complexity. And uh I would agree with uh all of the folks who have testified thus far and really want to emphasize two things. One is that uh the, the proposed uh reg- regulations uh would broaden the pool of potential candidates for office and uh both the diversity uh in many different respects, but as has been stated, uh more individuals from working-class backgrounds would be able to run for office uh would be made possible if we uh amend the current regulations in line with what has been uh said by uh those who have uh just testified. Uh, it would also uh not just be a service to those candidates, though. I think what's important is that it's a service uh to the voters, uh because being a candidate is very much a job. And uh the candidates are, in fact, uh informing the voters of their choice. And our current system really puts that burden on the candidates. And so uh by allowing them uh to be treated as employees, as staff of their campaigns, uh we're really respecting that and doing a service to the voters. So uh President Kennedy has already been quoted uh today in different contexts, uh but I will say uh one quote that I often teach in my class uh at Penn in the start of the semester is that uh President Kennedy said this in nineteen sixty, but for a politician to make a dent uh in the consciousness of a great majority of people is a long and laborious job, uh particularly in a primary where you do not have a party label. Uh, when you think of the money that well-known brands like Coca-Cola, who everybody already knows, uh continue to put into advertising day after day, you realize how difficult it is uh to become identifiable um as a political figure. And this requires a willingness to submit yourself to long, long labor. And uh as we'll hear, I uh, I expect from the next panel of candidates, uh you'll recognize that candidates, uh because they have that burden of uh explaining themselves to the voter, explaining the choice that the voters have, uh they have to show up uh at every hour of the day in which people in their communities are awake. Um, they uh are doing work that is far beyond, in fact, what uh an incumbent might be expected of in that respect. And they're competing with a commercial advertising environment uh in which they're trying to reach voters uh for a very good reason, to give them information on their choice. Uh, and yet they don't have uh nearly the resources of the kind of companies that are making a profit uh through uh the same mediums of communication uh that are quite costly uh because of that uh because of that environment. And so we have a situation uh where uh we have uh this tremendous burden that is placed on candidates uh to inform the voters. And what I think is important is that we recognize that um this is, in fact, a service to those voters. Now, some of the issues that have been raised, I want to address directly. One, of course, is on the issue of the, of the salary and what that should be. I think it's important to recognize that we are not setting a floor. This is a cap. And there are both practical checks have, have been recognized uh and political checks on what the salary would actually be for any one candidate. So, one, a candidate has to decide, uh, do I want to uh, you know, uh, spend uh on a salary, whether for myself or my staff or others? Or do I want to spend resources on reaching voters, uh which is ultimately the most important thing, and every candidate who is advised uh would be told, uh, you know, to try to spend eighty percent of their campaign uh on reaching voters. Uh, the second thing uh is that, you know, the, the currently on the risk of fraud, um, there are no, you know, regulations of this sort, putting caps on how much is paid to political consul- consultants uh or others uh who uh receive uh expenditures from campaign committees. So that risk is the same whether or not we change the regulation to allow candidates uh to earn a salary for their work. So I think it's important to rec- recognize that the risk does not significantly change uh in that regard. And uh in terms of duration, I would just add one final point on that, which is that uh campaigns today last longer than ever. Uh, the filing deadline is merely one point at the start of a long process of trying uh to reach those voters in what President Kennedy has uh said long ago was a long and laborious process uh for which I think it's a respectable thing that we have many candidates uh who are engaging in, and it's a service to the voters.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, next is Brad Smith from the Institute for Free Speech. He's participating with us virtually. Mr. Smith, welcome back, and the floor is yours.
Right. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I want to say hello to any of my other old friends who are out there that I can't see. I do see like Roy Luckett's name up there, and, and there may be others. Long before Buckley v. Valeo, every state allowed campaign finance contributions, but prohibited bribes. So what's the difference between the two? It's fairly complicated, but in the end, it pretty much boils down to personal use. Campaign contributions can only be spent to campaign for office and not to personally enrich the office holder. Now, back in two thousand and two, I voted with some misgivings, but I voted for regulation, the regulations up today that first allowed candidates to use campaigns to pay themselves salaries. In the years since, the Commission has used advisory opinions to further erode the limitations on the personal use of campaign funds. But our action twenty years ago is a mistake, and rather than compound it by passing this proposed rule, the Commission, in fact, should reestablish clear and firm limits on the personal use of campaign funds and indeed probably repeal the current section. The main reason for this is simply one of statutory authority. The Commission is prohibited from authorizing candidate salaries. How so? Fifty-two USC three oh one one four B is about as clear as a statute as one can find. Quote, "A contribution shall not be converted by any person to personal use." I don't know what you can call giving campaign funds to a candidate to cover personal living expenses uh other than a conversion to personal use and thus directly prohibited by the statute. As in two thousand and two, the commentators favoring the proposed rule raise arguments about fairness and helping candidates of modest means. And such arguments have, you know, some currency. I agree with Commissioner Dickerson. From a policy standpoint, there are certain things to be recommended here. But none of these comments have anything to do with the statute, which is why I presume that none of the written comments, nor any of the oral comments so far, except in both cases from my uh long friend and colleague on this panel, uh Larry Gold, have even attempted to discuss what the statute actually prohibits or allows. And with respect to Larry's legal acumen, I just think his analysis in this case is, is pretty clearly wrong. When the state law states that campaign funds may not be used for expenses that exist irrespective of a candidacy, it means that you can only spend funds on expenses that exist only because of the campaign. Campaign expenses, fundraising, advertising, a campaign headquarters, field office, polling, campaign travel. And to say that the candidate is working for the campaign seems a vast confusion. Everywhere else in the statute, we assume that the candidate and the campaign are the same, in exception of contributions, in making expenditures. In all of these ways, they are one and the same. The campaign does not exist but for the candidate, and is simply really an accounting device that enables us to police contributions in and expenditures out. Accordingly, section three oh oh one four, or three oh one one four B specifically lists certain prohibited funds uh, or certain prohibited expenses, including, among other things, and again, I quote, "A home mortgage, rent, or utility payment, a clothing purchase, a non-campaign-related automobile expense, or a household food items." These things are obviously more difficult for non-incumbents and candi- candidates of modest means to cover, but they're simply excluded. Simply calling them salary or fringe benefits doesn't change the fact that this proposed rule anticipates the direct conversion of campaign funds to pay for those and several other specifically prohibited uses. And I totally understand why a candidate, uh, such as Representative Frost would have liked to have used his campaign funds to pay himself over two hundred thousand dollars plus fringe benefits while running for office, but that's not allowed by the law. The section exists to prevent campaign contributions from going into a candidate's pocket to defray personal expenses, whether luxuries, such as a nice suit in which to campaign, a massage to relax before the big debate, teeth whitening to look good on the campaign trail, or necessities such as food, rent, insurance, or childcare. And that's the fundamental difference between campaign contributions and bribes. Now, a second related reason is agency competency, competency. Once you begin fudging on personal use in the way that you're anticipating, and that we've already done, and for which I deserve some blame, already the commission is asked to approve campaign funds to provide insurance, to pay for babysitters and nannies, to pay for elder care, to pay personal legal expenses. One alternative that you would have you determine the maximum candidate salaries with an eye on actually equalizing candidate incomes. Another one should decide what is a reasonable living wage, as if you were the wage and hour division of the Department of Labor, rather than the Federal Election Commission. Why not allow candidates to pay for haircuts, better-looking clothes, and better food to keep a candidate's energy up? And fundraising or recharging time at the country club, all of which could be helpful to a campaign, and all of which are a burden on candidates of modest means. But maybe you already agree with that. Um, after all, all of those examples would be legal under this proposed rule, as long as they were simply described as fringe benefits, but as they say, arose by any other name. Lost here and in the commission's general loosening of personal use rules over the years is the statute that the commission enforces on the commission's mission to assure that campaign funds are used to campaign, and so do not become the equivalent of bribes. This is the kind of feel-good rulemaking that sucks everybody in. I know, I've been there. I was sucked in on this very rulemaking. But when you think about it, the problems are there. For example, one commentator here just now stated, "Well, you're not going to have a risk of corruption," and others have implied that if you just pay the minimum for the office, because they're going to want to use it to campaign. Okay, but these laws, I, I'll bet nobody's thought about this, at least nobody has in the comments that I've seen or heard, right? These laws will preempt state anti-corruption laws. So any state representative can now be paid a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars while running for federal office, even if they have no intention of winning the office, even if they don't care if they win the office, even if it's a totally safe seat for the other party. But they can get that money, which may be very helpful in their extracurricular uh, persuasion while serving in the state legislature. Or anybody serving in an appointed office could also be paid uh, large sums of money ostensibly to run for camp- for office. And that's what I mean. There's so many uh, little traps here and things that people know. Everybody's feeling good. You know, everybody supports this. Who doesn't want more people to be able to run? Who, who wouldn't want to be able to get, use their campaign funds for personal use? When one commissioner states that every dollar covered comes from private funds and constitutes money that's not spent to persuade voters, I'm not really sure that's an argument in favor of this ruling. It strikes to me, it's an argument, it's the exact reason why this ruling is improper and contrary to the statute. So I look forward to answering any specific questions that you might have uh, during the uh, question period, and I thank you for your time today and for holding this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll tell you, you couldn't hear it, but you got a number of chuckles um, throughout the room, so. Um, and our final panelist is uh, Daniel Weiner from NYU's Brennan, Brennan Center for Justice. He's here with us in person. Mr. Weiner, welcome back.
Thank you uh, so much. Um, I'm chagrined to be going last, particularly that's a tough act to follow. So I'm gonna do my best, but Chair Lindenbaum, uh, Commissioners and staff, thank you so much for having me uh, and for the opportunity to speak today on this critically important subject. For those of you who don't know me, I co-direct the Elections and Government Program at the Brennan Center for Justice at NYU School of Law, like Mr. Smith and others here today. I'm an FEC alum. Uh, the Brennan Center is a nonpartisan law and policy organization, and a critical part of our mission is to champion policy solutions uh, to strengthen and revitalize American democracy, uh, so that it is one in which all Americans have the opportunity to participate. And I do believe that the policy before you today is one of those solutions. And it does, uh, with apologies to Mr. Smith, give me great pleasure to be before you today to discuss a set of issues that do have broad agreement across partisan and ideological lines. So simply put, as other panelists have said, running for Congress is a full-time job and an expensive proposition. Those of us in my field tend to focus on the cost of mounting a successful campaign, but as my co-panelists have already noted, running for office also imposes significant personal costs. It precludes other paid work. If you were a full-time homemaker or caregiver, it may mean that you need to take on extra childcare or dependent care costs. Um, and of course, it can mean the loss of health insurance and other regular benefits that in the United States are connected to paid employment. Um, as the original petitioner noted, Ms. Islam, this is often cost prohibitive for working Americans. And I do feel obligated to point out that many of the people who are most impacted by that discrepancy are the people who have historically been excluded from our political process. People of color, LGBT people, women, and particularly women of color. And I think it's fitting that you're conducting this hearing during Women's History Month, because this is a very important issue, as Ms. Gretchen Shirley and others have noted, for women candidates. Um, these groups have all made historic progress, but as we know, they continue to be underrepresented in Congress. Congress is also roughly fifty percent millionaires as compared to less than ten percent of the US population. So the commission has made progress on this issue. I think you made the right decision um, in your previous rulemaking and in your subsequent advisory opinions. But there is clearly room for improvement, as Commissioner Weintraub noted. Um, and our view, I think, aligns uh, significantly uh, with the views of other commentators. And I will briefly talk about our position, and then I want to spend the remainder of the time to talk a little bit about some of the objections. Um, we agree that there should be a single salary cap that should not be connected to someone's prior income. We take the position that you could authorize a cap up to the minimum salary for the office sought, but in the very least, it should be a living wa- excuse me, a living wage. And the offset should also be applied, for other earned income should also be applied evenly. We agree that there should be room for standard benefits. I thought that Mr. Gold's, you know, I thought that Mr. Gold's proposal to allow uh, you to give this, yourself the same benefits that you provide to your other campaign employees was a good one. I think that's a good uh, blueprint for a solution. Strongly agree that there should be uniform, a uniform eligibility period for collecting the salary. And I agree with Commissioner Bressard and Representative Frost that you should take into account losing candidates as well, because people are taking a big risk running for office, and it's appropriate to give them some wind-up period. And I also want to urge you to provide clear guidance for the non-compensation use of campaign funds, for instance, for childcare uh, necessitated by campaign events. Advisory opinions are lovely. Um, it's good that you've been giving them, but ultimately, I don't think people should have to come to you for an advisor opinion every one time they want to hire a babysitter. Um, all of these changes would be consistent with the Act. And Chair, Commissioner Dickerson, I share your concern about commingling, and I actually think this is the best way to prevent personal commingling with campaign funds, because I agree that a salary is compensation for services rendered to a campaign. And I, and I've studied these issues, and I've also worked here, would much rather have uniformed salary rules and clear rules for candidates being compensated that don't create the temptation to try to find other ways to, to supplement your daily living with campaign activities. So I think ultimately, strong rules in this area actually are an anti-corruption mechanism. And the Brennan Center certainly doesn't stint to anyone in worrying about corruption, but we are very much of the opinion that these are important changes. And I want to close just by saying that this rulemaking is important not just for legal reasons. Um, it's also an opportunity for you to send a message, uh, a bipartisan message encouraging people of all backgrounds to put their names forward for public service, and to dispel what I think is still a stigma against paying yourself a living wage when you run for office. The commission has a bully pulpit um, as in addition to your legal authority, and I think that you should use both. So thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to your questions.
Thank you, and thank you um, to all our panelists for these opening remarks. Um, I will also say to the record that we are running exactly on time, um, and we should all be very proud of ourselves um, for that. Um, so with that, I'd like to open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions. So colleagues, um, Commissioner Bressard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the first question that I have, I'm going to ask to Mr. Gold. And if you recall, in the comments that were made by Commissioner Dickerson, uh, there was a question regarding of the personal use of the effective test, of course, and we've heard it from other witnesses as well. So I'd like you to think about this question. Is it personal use to pay a salary to a campaign manager? Since that person will presumably use the salary to pay for mortgage or clothing, or made that nice haircut that we just heard about. Um, I also want to probably, you might want to get his teeth whitened because he's been advertising what he wants to do as well. Um, those are things that might be happening with the money. We don't know. So in that instance, um, is that explicitly personal use? And what about the fact, um, in that instance, if the campaign manager could volunteer uh, for the committee under the volunteer acceptance exception? Microphone. They, they work against us all the time.
So, no, I don't believe uh, paying the campaign managers a salary is an example of personal use. Now, of course, the personal use restriction applies to candidate and campaign manager. Um, and uh, just more broadly, you know, I think, you know, Commissioner Dickerson's concerns about uh, you know, commission authority and the anti-corruption purposes of the Act is all quite important here. Uh, the commission did address these, including, I assume, uh, Commissioner Smith uh, when it uh, issued the explanation justification of the original regulation twenty years ago. Uh, at sixty-seven Fed Reg seven six nine seven two, it made three points about. Uh, the first was, "But for the candidacy, the candidate would be paid a salary in exchange for services rendered to an employer." Uh, second, uh, if campaign funds are used for a financial obligation that is caused by campaign activity or the activities of an officer that uses, not personal use. And third, as I quoted my opening statement, "The salary paid to a candidate would be in return for the candidate's services provided to the campaign, and the necessity of that salary would not exist irrespective of the candidacy." I think salary is detached from the particular prohibited uses that are itemized in the regulations, which Chairman Dickerson and others have mentioned. Uh, if the candidate is providing services to the campaign, and I disagree with all friends that Smith, that the campaign is not an employer. The campaign is an employer. Uh, the statute makes uh, many distinctions between the campaign committee, the upper race committee, and the candidate himself or herself. And under law, campaigns are employers. They're subject to uh, employment laws, federal and state employment laws as employers. That is not preempted by uh, by the Federal Election Campaign Act. Um, so, uh, in the campaign committee, as the substitute employer here, uh, cannot corrupt the candidate, unlike the conventional employers, uh, that can subsidize their employees, the campaigns by continuing to, by enabling them to maintain on working time. So, um, I think that, uh, you know, the, I think the, the commission does have authority. The personal use restriction is statutory, and it's clearly necessary. Um, and so it's up to the commission to interpret the threat of them. Um, I think, uh, the concern that, uh, the former Commissioner Smith uh, it's, you know, explained, uh, I think can be avoided. Uh, he describes, I think, a slippery slope about benefits, that that easily can be prevented by some careful regulation by his office. I note that, uh, the statement in by two, 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 oh, seven, uh, by Commissioner uh, Bressard and Chairman Dickerson, uh, in fact, you know, made the point that, uh, where a candidate incurs childhood expenses that would not exist, they're expected to be candidate's activities in support of their own campaign, they may be paid for by using campaign funds. That's not an employment rule itself, but it is a specific um, application of the law that pertains to a particular circumstance that does not necessarily mean anything goes, and there's no end to what the commission will do. I also think that, uh, Commissioner Smith's example of a state-level incumbent running a kind of a faux campaign for federal office in order to enhance his, or his salary is undermine the fact that, you know, we've had twenty years of experience with the current rule, and there is no reportable, reported examples of abuse of the rule that I'm aware of. I mean, it's not that it can't be abused. Uh, any, any, any law is, it may be subject to abuse, but the um, but the way you deal with it is by, you know, taking enforcement action against it, not throwing out the baby. So, a bit of a long answer to your question, but I did want to address Dickerson's open concerns, and those of, you know, the way the commission is.
Thank you. I, I want to back up a little bit. I, I appreciated the, the direct responses to my opening, um, very much. Um, so I think, I think there's at least two big questions here, um, and I'd like to disaggregate them. Uh, you know, the first is, uh, you know, what, what the level of a salary cap should be? And, you know, in, in practice, uh, whether there, there's any, there's any basis for using the, the salary from an office holder as the baseline salary for a candidate, which I I will have questions about. It's an interesting question. Unrelated, though, is this question of duration that Representative Frost raised. You know, and, and I, I will, I will say, you know, I have some sympathy for that problem, because to the extent that this regulation is, is cabined by an opportunity cost sort of approach to salary replacement. Um, you, you do have this problem of starting and ending points that, you know, create the problems you've heard. So I, I guess I'd like to start there, because that strikes me as the easiest of questions. Um, and maybe I should start with Mr. Smith, since I have a soft spot where it centers on panels, uh, from personal experience. Um, but I wonder, uh, you know, how should we think about the period between the, the closing of the uh, election, between Election Day and the moment in which the new Congress or the new president takes office? What, what would be the appropriate rule during that period? And I think relatedly, uh, maybe an easier question. Uh, you know, right now, we've tied this to the, the um, the date of, of access to the ballot, the filing date in the state. Um, does it make sense to instead tie it, as several of the commentators have suggested, to our own declaration of candidacy process?
Sure, thank you, uh, Commissioner Dickerson. So, um, you know, I think again, that much can be, you know, there's, there's we've put a finger on a problem there, that people have a couple months in which it's not really quite clear how, how are they supposed to live through November and December uh, in terms of income? Having said that, I would note that, for example, when I uh, accepted an appointment and was sworn in as a federal election commissioner, I spent my first two months sleeping on a friend's sofa bed in his living room of his apartment in Washington DC, because I couldn't afford to, to rent a place in DC until I got my home sold out here in, in the Midwest. Uh, it's not an uncommon problem uh, that we put upon people who would serve in federal government. And for that reason, maybe it should be addressed, but it should be addressed by Congress. Note that Congress, for example, already provides transition funds for presidential campaigns, for presidential administrations. Congress can provide uh, uh, a payment uh, for persons who have been elected to office once their election is certified. We would have some questions, you know, if they're, if they're in recounts, how, you know, do they have to be certified before they can continue drawing salaries and so on? But certainly Congress can provide for that. And in fact, in recent Congresses, we've had a bill introduced, the Help America Run Act, that would do just that, and the bill has not passed. And I think that indicates uh, some of the problems uh, with attempting to do this by commission fiat. Um, so I, I, I think that it's um, uh, it, it raises one other theoretical problem, which is even more than when the person is a candidate. We now know that the person is an office holder. Presumably, they would raise these funds through their campaign after the election. So anybody who is receiving the, the funds now, or could donate the funds now, knows that essentially they're going straight into the candidate's pocket to provide the candidate with an income of about fifteen thousand dollars a month uh, for a couple of months while we wait for them to transition into office. Uh, so again, policy-wise, I, I can see some issues with it. I can see some reason for Congress to want to provide those kinds of transition funds. But I think again, it's one of those things that is simply beyond the commission's authority under the statute, and it does raise a number of policy distinctions which uh, raise, I think, some serious issues and, and have not really been addressed. And I would point out when we, when, when it, when it suggested that, well, we haven't had any, uh, for example, examples of, of corruption under the current rule for twenty years. Well, that's because the current rule, in fact, includes a whole bunch of safeguards. One of which is that you can't get paid more than you were paid, more than you were earning before, and so on. And of course, part of this whole rule, the very purpose and intent of this rule, the stated objective of some of the commissioners is, and many of the commentators, is the current rule's safeguards are too strict. We need to get rid of them. So I, I think that you need to be very careful about these kinds of things.
That's a quick follow-up question. So we've, you know, again, there's this bifurcation between legal arguments and sort of factual and policy concerns that, that runs through all this. Do you see, and I'll throw this open to the rest of the panel as well, because several positions were taken. I appreciated the shout out to the 15 day period before the filing. That was, that was a good lawyer's point. Are there any, is there any way to read the statute as giving us discretion to determine this, the period in which a can, a salary can be paid? Or, you know, especially to you, Mr. Smith, is it just your position that there isn't any policeable legal basis for the commission to exercise discretion on that question?
Let me give you what's kind of a big picture answer to that. I think one of the great problems in American democracy today is the unwillingness of lawmakers to faithfully execute the law and of those in the executive branch charged with enforcing the law. In other words, the approach is often to say, is there any way that I can plausibly, and really not so plausibly, everybody knows it's a fig leaf. So is there any way I can put a fig leaf over my desire to accomplish what I want to do under the current statute, which has always been considered to prohibit what I want to do? Right? And we see that over and over from both parties, in which they're not giving a faithful execution of the law. So yeah, you can sit here and you can look and, and you can try to say, oh, you know, we can squeeze this in. We can redefine what's a committee, what's a candidate statute. You know, committee doesn't exist. It's an independent expenditure committee until the candidate comes on board. And then it's totally converted and it can't continue to spend money. It might have been able to spend it as an independent expenditure committee, can't raise that money. You know, you, you can't kind of play these little games like that, verbal games, and say, we can squeeze this in under the statute. I would suggest to you that, that nobody has ever thought that the statute allows candidates to pay themselves salaries. And that what we're doing here is exactly saying, can we squeeze this in with a fig leaf that makes it think that it's okay for a candidate to use over $200,000 in campaign funds to pay himself for the time before running? I think the answer to that is, is, is no. So to your, your question, I mean, I think the, I think people can come up with rationales that seem to fit. But I think that a really faithful execution of the statute says no. And, and I was wrong on that 20 years ago. I know that all of us here would agree, that's the only incorrect decision I made during my time on the commission. But I think you need to be careful about that.
Appreciate that, sir. My, my colleagues keep on very gently reminding me that we have no jurisdiction over the naval shipbuilding budget.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I read the comments correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of you, I think with the exception of Mr. Smith, would do away with the portion of our current regulation that deals with the earned income that the candidate received during the year prior, maybe coming from the second and second.
Yes.
So I want to address the unique situation then, that, that I think we would have to consider in that particular situation. And that is presidential candidate. The presidential salary is $400,000 a year currently. And what parameters should we put in place if we were to address that? There, there, obviously you get on the ballot by state. So you can get it, you know, you can get a presidential candidate in one state. I looked it up here. Last cycle, there were four particular parties that had a ballot line in New York. The conservative, the Democrat, the Republican, and I'm sorry, the Democratic, Republican, and working families. Now, some of those join together during different presidential election years, other years they don't. The Libertarian Party has access in only 33 states. The Green Party has access in only 17 states. The Constitution Party has access to 12. But what point would they become a candidate for president in those particular situations? And then capable of paying themselves $100,000 a year? And a second part to that question would be, what about the incumbent US Senator or Congressman who decides to run for president? They're currently making $174,000 a year. We would do away with the earned income provision. It's currently in the red, but we just agreed we should do away with it. That means they would have a difference of $226,000 a year that they would be allowed to pay themselves. So if you're a sitting US Senator or Congressman, you decide to file in one state as a presidential elector, and all of a sudden you're now allowed to pay yourself an additional $226,000 a year. That's kind of a two-part question. Happy to hear from all of you for one.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. I think those are, those are very valid questions, and I'll try to walk through them. I, you know, disagree with former Commissioner Smith. I do think you have discretion, and I think you raise good policy questions of how you would implement this rule. Speaking only for myself, and having not thought that much about it, I would say it would be defensible to say that the salary cap would be the, you know, minimum federal salary of a member of Congress. So $174,000, I think is what it is. You're actually, the filing deadlines question points to, I think, one of the unworkability aspects of the current rule, right? Is that it's not uniform. And I think it's one of the reasons that all of us have sort of argued, you really just need a uniform period of eligibility. Similarly, our position is not that the offset, you should just do away with the offset. It's that the offset should be uniform and that it should apply to everyone equally. So I think that you could have the discretion, and I think it wouldn't be bad to say there should be an offset for other earned income, maybe particularly other earned income from another federal office. It just should apply regardless to everyone on the same terms. And I will note that some of the other concerns that Mr. Smith raised are also, you know, they're policy questions that I think that you can deal with in this rulemaking. Again, I haven't thought through this entirely, but I think that you could have a provision that said you can give yourself a salary as long as you're not violating any other federal, you know, state law. That's a pretty basic provision that you could include. So I think these are soluble problems. I mean, again, I want to reiterate, I do not, I think you were, the commission was correct when it issued the original salary rulemaking. I do think the plain text of the statute allows this. And I actually think that it would be a safeguard against corruption because it would reduce the incentives for the kind of commingling and taking advantage that the current rules still do allow.
I just want to add, I agree with all of that. And I would say, I think about this in one particular way, similar to Commissioner Dickerson, which is there's a legal question here and there's a policy question. And I think Commissioner Trainer, you raised for my, in my mind, the most difficult policy question. On the legal question, I disagree with Mr. Smith. And I would say the BICA makes clear, a campaign has wide discretion to decide how to spend its money. The one exception is you cannot convert campaign funds to personal use, any person. And nobody can use campaign funds for personal use, whether you're the campaign manager, the candidate, the intern. And the commission, for as long as it has existed, hasn't interpreted that. And you can do that again here. And the question is, when is an expense irrespective of candidacy? I don't think a salary is irrespective. If you accept Mr. Smith's proposition, you put our candidates in a legal catch 22, where they are not allowed to get paid for work they're no longer doing from another employer, but they're also now not allowed to get paid for work they are doing for their campaign. A candidate and a campaign are not the same person. One is an hopefully incorporated 527 nonprofit entity. The other one is an individual who is working day in and day out with their organization to elect themselves to office. On the policy question, I agree, that's a very tough question. And I, the application is actually one I had not thought of. But many candidates for Senate run for president, members for House might run for, for Senate for president as well. And I think all of us here echo the concern that you should divorce the calculation from the minimum wage and from past earned income, because I think both measures are very problematic. And then after that, the commission has a hard decision to make that what is an amount that is reasonable, that is fair, that does not open the door to corruption. And I think that this body, particularly this body of commissioners, is very well equipped to do so. If, if we think that $400,000 is too much, set it to be, you know, the minimum amount for any member of Congress. There's not that incentive to just seek higher office to pad your salary. Set it to half of the, the salary of a member of Congress, but set it at something reasonable that is fair and applies evenly to everybody.
I don't recall the issue of a presidential candidate coming up in the original rulemaking. Could be wrong. You know, it's certainly something that should be addressed. It's not addressed clearly in the, in the current rule. The current rule really does cover it. You know, it seems to me that this, you know, running for president is so different than running for Congress that the politics of this situation will cut against abuse there by anybody who's seriously running for president. Now, with the fact that, you know, parties having to qualify for ballots in different states. You could set the primary filing deadline or the point where the individual is eligible for a salary at the point where the candidate has qualified for the ballot in enough states to add up to 270 electoral votes. I'm, I'm thinking out loud here, you know. But, you know, right now, the, the rule does, you know, reduce the contentious salary, campaign salary of a candidate by any other earned income. So it's not that a member of Congress could just lap on another $100,000. Even so, it just seems very unlikely that a member of Congress would increase their salary in a serious way for the presidency and not even damage to the vote to be reelected to their current position, or did they? I guess the bottom line point is, this is something that the commission, it's worth addressing. But I think it's, it's a practical matter, somewhat likely a side issue to the central purpose of the rule, which is to enable individuals to be able to run for Congress.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to talk about it a little bit further in the context of, I know it seems unusual and something that you say may not happen, but we've seen recent litigation that the commission lost, where we had regulations in place for candidates not paying them fullback funds that they had loaned themselves. And yet we've seen those candidates, you know, it looks good across the board now, candidates going back to paying fullbacks for those funds. So while there, you know, there may not be a public appetite because of the perception of the abuse, I think that as we look at candidates and people in Congress becoming more and more professional in their job and not limiting themselves to, you know, a certain number of terms, if there's something of that nature, that this is something that, that really would have to be looked at in doing away with that provision of not looking at the previous earned income of the individual. I think that, while I disagree with the current regulation, I think that the only saving grace is that earned income exception in there, because I think that provides the only kind of equal protection, protection for the commission with regard to what we would have to be concerned with in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just one additional thought to throw out. Going back to this statute, right, and the regulations, what we're asking here is, would the expense is just irrespective of a candidate? I mean, if you're a sitting member of Congress, you have a full-time job. Ethically, you still have to do that full-time job. But I think there's an argument that the commission wants to pursue it, that if you're an incumbent, you can never draw a salary in your campaign because you were required by an in-house ethics rules to do your full-time job without compromise, even though this is a running process. Might be a conclusion to that problem.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this question goes into a different area. It's in some discussion regarding opportunity costs. But in Mr. Weiner, in your comment, you all said that we should look at this probably more preferably as a fair market value assessment. So did you give us your analysis of the reason why you think it's more preferable to face fair market versus opportunity?
Absolutely, and thank you for that question. The fair market value is a concept that recurs throughout your regulations and a lot of your decisions. And I, you know, as we articulated in our comment, I think that is the best, we think that is the best rubric to look at this. And I, I want to join my co-panelists, who pointed out that the candidate, I think, is providing services to their campaign. I would note, by the way, that, you know, there are a number of other instances where campaigns will provide monetary value to candidates in exchange of a candidate owns a property that the campaign uses. If a candidate owns a business that the campaign wants to use as a vendor, that has happened many times. So you already have, you know, what we might call a moral hazard here. You just happen to have a moral hazard that sort of skews in favor of folks who already own businesses and properties that they can maybe use with their campaigns. And I think that actually that has mostly been managed. And again, returning to this concept of fair market value. Opportunity cost, I think, one is, is less familiar in your sort of regulations and in your decisions. I think it's harder to quantify. And again, you know, I really do feel that leads to a degree of unfairness, which is an essential worker who worked all through the pandemic, but made a lower salary, I don't think should be treated differently than a lawyer or, or a stockbroker. And I think that's a policy question, and going back to Commissioner Dickerson, that you do have the power to take into consideration. But I think that in terms of just consistency with your approach to sort of analogous issues, looking at kind of fair market value, looking at the services provided is analytically more effective for the business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Broussard actually anticipated my question, that she took it in a slightly different direction. So I think the opportunity cost concept is, is unfamiliar to our larger law because it comes out of the respective test, which is limited to the, the personal use issue. I mean, I think that's, that's why you have that disconnect. But I want to probe this, this market question a little bit. So it, well, I'll just say it. It seems to me wrong to say that the salary for a member of Congress is the fair market value for a candidate for at least two very obvious reasons. One, they're different jobs. A member of Congress has to be a member of Congress and engaged in all the duties of a member of Congress, to Ms. Lopez's point. And a candidate does not. And so, you know, that, that seems just factually wrong. The other, of course, is that the expenses are different. A member of Congress is expected to maintain a residence in the district in, as well as one in Washington DC. And so the, the overhead, for lack of a better term, of a member of Congress is markedly different from that for a candidate. And so those seem to me like fairly obvious objections that I didn't really see addressed in any of the comments. So I'll throw that to you. The bigger issue, I think, is that, you know, when we talk about a market price, what we usually have in mind is arm-length transactions bargained for in a free market, where supply and demand are meeting in some way, and you're, you're getting a market price. But the salary for Congress is not in any way resemble that. I mean, there's, there's constitutional limitations on how Congress can play, can pay itself, that impose delays, which is not really a market concept. It's, I'm not going to say self-interested, but certainly not an arm-length transaction between members of Congress and themselves over how to pay themselves. So I'm just not sure that is a, leaving aside the underlying question of whether, you know, we're breezily talking about the Dernstein 174 and 400, which is not a working class salary, I'll just say. You know, leaving aside the, the central arbitrariness of us setting a market price, is that, do you have any responses to what I think are pretty clear objections to using congressional pay as a, as a market mechanism?
I can go first. Well, Commissioner, those are, those are very valid questions, and I think ones that you will wrestle with. I will say that at least my perception is that the commission has tended to adopt a somewhat deferential approach to fair market value in other contexts. It, fair market value is inherently going to be somewhat indeterminate. And the commission has tended to say that candidates and campaigns can use their money, you know, however they see fit. And again, you have a lot of examples of candidates using money to, for property that, you know, rent property that the candidate owns to, you know, provide services, you know, from a candidate's business. And the commission generally does not, you know, look under the hood too much. And despite, you know, the Brennan Center's position as a relatively pro-regulatory advocate, I understand why, right? Because ultimately, candidates, as I think Mr. Gold noted, you know, are subject to the kind of free market, free political marketplace. And I think that the same logic applies here. I, you know, would argue, and I'll be interested in what my co-panelists say, that, that the salary, at least the minimum salary for a federal office holder is an effective approximation, given imperfect information of what the fair market value of a candidate's services, a non-encumbered candidate's services are. And I, I recognize, though, that that is imperfect. And it's why, you know, in our comment, you said that is our preferred approach. But ultimately, our, our goal is that you allow all candidates to collect a living wage and reasonable benefits. And to me, that's the bottom line. But I do think that you are always But I do think that you are always dealing with a certain amount of uncertainty, and these are tough policy calls. And certainly, I think, on the presidential level, as Commissioner Trainer noted, there are particularly difficult policy questions. Our point is that you do have authority to address this problem. And there's probably more than one right solution. Again, sort of adhering to that lodestar of a living wage and a reasonable benefit.
Commissioner, may I? Do you recognize?
I'm sorry, I don't know where that's come from. Okay, if you keep your video on, I'll be able to do that. But give me just one moment. I have a, Commissioner Broussard just has a question for the panelists.
Thank you. I wanted to, in response to the question that I've asked, Mr. Gold, in your comments, you made the suggestion that looking at alternative aid that goes 50% up to 100%. It, did anyway, were you taking some consideration of a fair market value in, in kind of looking at a 50% of the, the salary? Just curious.
I don't believe we, we advocated the 50%.
I think it says you're allowing a pay to pay up to 100% of the allowance, is how I, I read it. So I was kind of saying, well, that goes to how Shauna does math apparently. But, um, okay, well, then I think you've answered my question. I just, my poor math, so, all right.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Appreciate. So I, I want to respond quickly to Commissioner Dickerson's, I guess, last comment. So we have a campaign committee. It's, it's called the John Doe for Congress Committee. And they're out there and collecting contributions and stuff. And then one day, they decide whoever chairs this committee, you know, it would be really helpful to us if we actually hired a candidate. So they go out on the market and put some ads out and so on, and eventually hire a candidate for Congress, who just happens to be John Doe. And they get into negotiations with him about his salary. And they say, well, you know, we can only pay you the congressionally mandated mandate minimum, or the FEC rules will let us pay more in congressional salary. But we can give you fringes, and, and we can give you a car, a cell phone plan, of course, child support and healthcare, childcare and healthcare, but cell phone plan, a car. We can give you a country club membership. We can give you a luxury box to athletic events. Anything essentially can go into fringes under some of these various alternatives. Again, many of which are very explicitly prohibited by the statute. So I think, you know, the question not only gets to that question of how does the commission determine a salary? But, but what is, you know, you know, what are you getting yourselves into? And how much fine tuning are you going to have to be doing? And as I've raised these issues here, one thing I've noticed is repeatedly others are saying, well, gee, I've never really thought about that, but I suppose we could deal with that. And I suspect, you know, you probably could more or less adequately. The point is that you're going to have this never ending group of questions coming down the road if people in fact want to get around. And, and again, I think we go back to the statute that says simply, you can't do this. And I think we talk about a faithful execution of the statute. Nobody thought ever that the statute was intended to prevent a campaign from paying salaries staffers for the campaign. It was intended to apply to the candidate, and it was intended to apply to the salaries staffers taking campaign funds and just using them for other things outside their market negotiated salary. And what we have here again is not only is the candidate not in that position, but there is no market negotiated salary for him. Again, the campaign doesn't exist, and one day they decide to go out and hire John Doe to be a candidate. And, and lo and behold, they find the best candidate to fill the John Doe for candidate is John Doe. He'll provide the best services to the committee. That's not how it works. That's not what we're talking about here. So I think he's again raised, you know, he has put his finger on another real problem with this issue, both in terms of its practical implementation and in terms of its conceptual action in contrast with the statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I was just going to ask you, the counterparty laws in the market for candidate services, but your, your explanation is quite a bit more colorful. Can, can I ask a, a question of Mr. Gold that's related? And I will, I will admit that I, as my colleague today, I'm sure happy to tell you, struggle with the larger question of how we think about candidate candidates, just as a, as a corporate entity. Which I, you know, the role of the treasurer, the role of the candidate, I'm sure none of this is needed in one of the panel. I do think it's what the kids are calling under a theorized. So my, I guess my question is this. In your opening, you mentioned that campaigns are employers. I, I certainly agree. My question is, are they employers of the candidate? You know, how do we think about the relationship between the candidate and the committee, which I think is distinguishable from the, the question Commissioner Broussard asked about campaign manager, certainly in the role of an agent of, well, an agent of something, probably maybe the committee, maybe the candidate, it's, it's not really clear to me. So I wonder if you have thoughts on that.
Well, I think the employer, I think the campaign can be the employer of the candidate by looking at as the commission rationalized the rule from years ago, that the candidate is performing services to the, to the camp, for the authorized committee, necessary services, core services, including the authorized committee without the candidate. And the fact that the campaign acts as an employer in its relationship with the candidate, even though the candidate is really running the whole show, is, I think, a necessary legal mechanism in order to effectuate the purposes of this rule, in order to apply with employment law, in order to enable the commission in part to set some kind of range or salary cap here, which I agree is a necessary component of the rule. More broadly, I do want to come back to the point I've made a few times. There is a political marketplace here that necessarily is going to happen, what is done, what is able to be done, what is able to be carried, carried off in this whole area. And I think the commission can make some comfort in that. I think this unit is certainly concluding, it's a responsible question, this is very, very important. So I think, I think the campaign can do, is as a legal matter, maybe an employer of this situation, it could serve us a lot of purposes.
Let me just jump in on that. We, we've all talked about having a campaign, the side 27, which is your corporation. I think it has a board, depending on the state, depends on how many board members are required. Your experiences when you're setting up these boards, is the candidate usually a board member?
I have less experience than I think Ms. Lopez, but in my limited experience, it works. Usually not.
I've never had a candidate be a member of the board, and I recommend against it.
I'd say that I've always made the same recommendation and, yeah, I just have to let me that path there and that information.
Madam Chair? Is it a formal matter a campaign can fire to go?
It's a formal matter, depending on the, depending on the corporate, corporation law, the bylaws, I mean, if you incorporate, now, which you don't have to, campaign doesn't, my first committee does not have to incorporate, but it can without being incorporated for purposes of, you know, the movement law. But it depends on the state incorporation law, which requires bylaws to certain areas. Technically, yes, in reality. Again, in the political reality of this situation, you would conclude that.
Chair? Again, I, I take the point. I, I agree with you that there is a marketplace of ideas, slightly refraining your, your point. But I think the concern, and this is always a frustration in this job, you know, we're sitting up here, we're all serious people. We tend to have serious people come and, and present to us. And I think that serious people have an idea of what a candidate looks like. I will tell you, because we have all sorts of, if you go down the hallway, there's a big filing cabinet full of unserious candidate filings. And, and I guess our concern is that those reputational checks on behavior are not formal. Formal checks are things like, a board controls the actions of a corporation and is entitled within the law of the state and the bylaws and all the rest of that to take whatever action it wishes. That's a formal check. The fact that anyone who wants to can file as a candidate for president and raise money as much as they like, and they don't have to hire anybody, is, is also, you know, a formal check. And so I wonder, you know, when we're starting to talk about the incentives of, you know, low to mid six-figure salaries, are, are we really as confident as, as you're suggesting that those reputation checks will be sufficient on unserious people to do see this as an opportunity for, for self-enrichment? I guess I'm not quite a sanguine on that point, but I, I'm not trying to filibuster. There's a response to that, or there's, there's history that I'm, I'm missing, and I'm very open to it. But I think the concerns you're hearing here are not serious candidates for president really worried about their reputations. I think the concerns are drifting of various, of various varieties.
I think one of the great things is our afternoon panel, we'll have another, we'll be able to speak to the difficulties of raising money for office, and there are probably much easier ways to make a fix for the salary, even between office and having a fundraise for that salary, and spend all their time and call time. Oops, sorry, is there anyone else left here?
First of all, Commissioner, I appreciate being called a serious person. My mother know that you said that, because she needs that empirical evidence.
I think you can put on your resume.
I, I will. But just in, in general response, and also thinking about Mr. Smith's comments, what I, what is very encouraging and refreshing about this here, these are all, all, I think, legitimate questions. And I can think off the top of my head of ways that you could mitigate some of the problems that you were talking, worried about here, including potentially saying, you know, if you're going to pay a salary, you need to be incorporated and have a board. But the broader, I think, issue that I, or point that I want to make is that the commission deals with these sort of complex problems all the time. I'm thinking, for instance, and this is one where maybe we would have more disagreements, political committee status. This is a complex problem that you have said that Congress has left you some leeway to, to sort of cope with. And at least that has been the position of a number of commissioners, including, I would expect, former Commissioner Smith. This is what you do. And my position is just that this is no more complex, this is no more difficult than many of the other funny issues, that the statute does leave you discretion to resolve. And I'm not persuaded otherwise. And so I would hope, you know, that hypotheticals, that sort of the hard cases don't deter you from taking action here, just as they don't deter you in many other contexts, from trying to come up with rules that safeguard the, the objectives of the act, but that also, you know, enrich the marketplace of ideas, as you said. And I think I am a little bit, you know, chagrined if the hearing gets too bogged down in that, because I think that is the big picture of what we're talking about.
I agree with everything my, my co-panelist said, and I would just like to add to, and I don't know if you all thought about this, but in a lot of areas of personal use, the regulations leave it up to kind of a case by case basis with some factors. And I don't think anything would prevent the commission from saying if it is true that this need to pay yourself a salary would not exist irrespective of candidacy, because you're spending so much time campaigning, that you need to pay yourself a salary, okay, but not if you are not a real candidate, which would leave open the door to enforcement. If someone really is actually not doing any campaigning, they just filed an FEC Form 1 and Form 2 with the commission, and then moved on with their day. I don't think that would be, be an impossible thing, and it is a way to safeguard. I would also add, in my experience, it is quite hard to raise a lot of money for a candidate. There are real costs to it. And again, we live in a, a country with a strong First Amendment, and there's a marketplace there, and you have to convince people to, to give you their money. And, and $3,300 chunks, so it is not, is not super easy. And the last thing I will say, this is going back, but to Commissioner Trainer's earlier question, taking off my campaign finance hat and putting my ethics hat on, I remember that that House and Senate ethics rules would currently prohibit senators and members from taking more than the outside earned income cap. So you're already constrained thereby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hot panel today. Hard to get a word in edgewise. I want to thank all of the panelists. It's been a really interesting discussion, and in particular, my former colleague, Brad Smith, the FEC was a, became a less entertaining place the day that you left the building. I want to go back to talking about corruption, because as I understand it, that is the only reason we could have for limiting any use of campaign funds, is to prevent corruption. And so far, I think we've, we've heard that there's been no evidence in the last 20 years of any form of corruption coming from the current rules. It's been suggested that's because of all the restrictions that we're planning on, on lifting. But primarily, I mean, the big lift that we would, that we are contemplating is untethering the, the, the salary cap from somebody's prior income. Now, you know, a lawyer or a consultant could continue to be a lawyer and, and a consultant while they are running for office, as long as they are providing some services to their, to their clients, they could continue to draw money from, there's, there's no outside income limit for candidates. They could continue to draw however much money they can from clients who might perceive them as a hot ticket to Congress, somebody they want to ingratiate themselves with. And, and there's no rule against that right now, although that is, you know, I would argue, a potential source of corruption. And I guess my, and I, and by the way, I, I thought that Commissioner Dickerson made a really interesting point on, on the salary, that, you know, one shouldn't look to the congressional salary as the appropriate metric for a candidate salary, because it's, it's different jobs. Well, running for office is also a different job from being a lawyer or a banker or whatever with somebody's previous form of employment. So if we are talking about what's the appropriate rate that the candidate should be paid for being a candidate, it's not clear to me, and I'm happy to hear from any of the panelists, as to why the appropriate metric for a candidate's salary ought to be what you did in another job that had entirely different job responsibilities than, than running for office. And on a similar note, again, opening this up to any panelists, is there an increased risk of corruption? I alluded to this in my, in my opening comments, from a stay-at-home parent, a machinist, a plumber, a teacher, somebody who makes a lot less money than a, than a lawyer or a banker. Are there actually increased risks of corruption from those people drawing a salary from their campaign that would justify our having a, a rulemaking in which we say you have to have a lower salary than a banker or a lawyer or a doctor or somebody else who's very high paid? So I, I open that up to anybody who wants to take.
So, thank you, Commissioner, for all of that. I, I don't think there's a higher risk of corruption, depending on your salary at the time. And I want to echo something that Mr. Weiner said earlier, which I actually think in the absence of a real ability for a candidate to get a sufficient salary from their campaign, you do run into an increased risk that they're going to get paid for work they're not really doing. And I would say one thing I've seen as a practitioner is certain candidates getting paid enormous sums of money from prior employers that I'm skeptical that they're still doing the same amount of work from. So I think that the, one of the benefits of this rulemaking is to help prevent some of that, and I think combat corruption in, in a powerful way. And maybe I'm thinking about this differently than the rest of the commission, but I don't see the commission's job here as needing to necessarily specify the exact fair market value of the services the candidate is providing. I do think the campaign can do that. I see it as a cap to prevent corruption. And we're saying at a certain point, it's too much money, and that's, that cannot be the fair market value. So it is an outer bounds on the market, but still allowing the market, both within donors wanting to get to a campaign and the campaign itself, its budget, to determine how much the candidate can make.
And I think the, yeah, I think that, you know, one important aspect of the current rule that should be maintained is the reduction in the campaign's salary by whatever the other is, which maybe addresses the situation, is, is a very good, important check to prevent, you know, abuse here. And, you know, the problem with the current rule, relying entirely on the prior year's experience of the candidate, as I said earlier, is undermining the purposes of the rule itself. arbitrarily disadvantaging individuals who happened to the previous year, or even if you just say the previous three years had circumstances where they're not winning very much money, and then it puts a cap for no, really no good reason on their ability to sustain themselves while they are trying to have a campaign. And they are likely facing, or could be facing, you know, opponents in a primary who are very differently situated. And certainly, in the general election case, an incumbent who certainly has the $174,000 salary with no real constraints on, on huge campaigns.
Mr. McGejei?
Thank, thank you. I, I would raise, I think, the case that was brought up earlier regarding Ted Cruz last year. You know, the Supreme Court decided that a limit on his, you know, being able to repay more than $250,000 to his campaign was unconstitutional. And I think it's important to recognize, we spoke about this in regards to the durational requirement, what happens post campaign. But the court saw that the, the risk of corruption was addressed by the was addressed by the contribution limit, not by the expenditure, which ultimately went back to the candidate, which in the case of a loan for a wealthy candidate is well above anything that we're discussing now in terms of 174,000, it could be, you know, it could be far above that. And so, you know, the court has already found that wasn't, you know, something that raised the risk of corruption, quid pro quo corruption, you know, as they found. And so this is really, you know, not, this is really, it's allowing people who don't have the resources to make those loans, and the numbers we're talking about are even much less significant than what would, what a wealthy candidate would be capable of loaning themselves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then I, I think it's my last question. I know we've, this has been a, this has been, this has been good. So Ms. Lopez, you, I think, I'm not sure I agree, but the point was very well-made, that, you know, there, there is going to be a market below whatever cap is established. And at some level, the arbitrariness of the cap doesn't change the fact that there's a, we'll call it a free market below that cap. But I still have sort of a larger, just question of basic administrative law, which maybe, maybe Mr. Gold or Ms. Lopez, maybe one of you has run into in your practice. I, I pretend to know great expertise in labor law. But, you know, it does seem to me that to the extent the commission is being called on to set the value of labor, whether you want to consider that the value of the fair market of the services being provided, or the, the risk of corruption inherent in a particular price point, or however you want to couch it, that, you know, that, as a matter of the theory of the administrative state, one, I, I question our expertise in doing that. But I also have the larger question of, is that a thing administrative agencies do? Like, I, I understand that we, we meaning the United States federal government writ large, price commodities, you know, engage in, in contracting, do all these things. Are you aware, and this isn't a gotcha question, and I'd be open to something after this hearing on this point, but are you aware of a case where an administrative agency is empowered by Congress to set the value of labor?
Well, yes.
By fiat?
Yeah, for example, under the Davis Bacon Act, Service Contract Act, to labor standards laws that determine what the prevailing wage is in particular, on particular jobs, and applies that prevailing wage in federal contracts. So, you know, and that's, Department of Labor does this with his expertise to do it. And it's not determining itself what the wage should be of a, for a particular occupation. It's looking at the market and seeing what it is, how it prevails in a particular community, and their regulations and standards do that. It's different from what the commission would be doing here. Mentioned a question, but it is different from what we're doing here. Inherently, you all would be establishing a cap or a range. Inherently, you're making an arbitrary decision, making a judgment of everything. As I said earlier, there is no market for candidates as such as a job because it's not just, but in order to make this administrable, you ought to, you need to set something. And both the commission and Congress, in many different areas of the federal election campaign act, have signed dollar values and specified dollar figures. And in an arbitrary way, trying to just make a best judgment about where it should be. The three hundred, the thirty-three hundred dollar limit is the limit. Does that mean thirty-three hundred dollars and one penny is corrupting? Well, technically, yes. When you sit back and think, well, no, there's really just a tiny difference, and there isn't. But a number must be set.
But that's Congress's judgment.
Well, it's, yeah, but I think the commission in this situation can, can establish that. And I don't believe that it would be a unique example of the commission setting an numerical standard.
Thank you very much.
Our final comment? Or what, be one more question?
Just to add, I'll be, I'll be very brief, just to add to that, right? Is your, I think, as Ms. Lopez noted, your, your job is simple. You're, you're here to generally not get in the way of campaigns doing what they need to do to win, except that you have the overriding imperative to, to prevent corruption. I think I, I want to associate myself with, there are several interlocking safeguards against corruption here. There is the contribution limit, and then there is the cap that you are establishing. So I think that your job, you know, is quite a bit simpler than the Labor Department's job here. And ultimately, the fact that it's somewhat indeterminate is inherent to the business that you're engaged in. And I think does not, as, again, someone who represents an organization that worries a lot about corruption and, and our system of money and politics, does not really concern me. I think that the benefits of this rulemaking far outweigh the risk here. And it's inherent, that sort of balance is inherent to what you do, in my view.
Thank you, just kind of a quick follow-up. So I, I bridle a little bit at the use of the word arbitrary. You tell an administrative agency they're acting in an arbitrary fashion. I was like, oh, my God, that's, that's, that's where we get our rules thrown out. But to put, you know, a slightly different gloss on that, is, is our, are we under an obligation to come up with a perfect rule? Or just, we just have to demonstrate that we have a rational basis for what we are doing? As opposed to behaving in an arbitrary and, dare I say, appreciative fashion, which would be bad.
Yeah, I, I wasn't trying to sabotage the rulemaking from the outset.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Right, no, I, I, sure, I think you got, you know, you need to come up with a reasonable rule, of course. And I think on the basis of original rulemaking, what we're doing now, twenty years of experience, and so far as it can be observed, I think you can come up with something that is defensible. That, you know, whereas, as you said earlier, I think Mr. Weiner said earlier, there is a certain degree of deference that is given to this commission. And what are you, if you can use it responsibly.
Well, thank you all for this really fantastic panel. I know that I certainly got an incredible amount out of it and really helped lay the foundation for what we're trying to do here. So for all of our witnesses today, if you want to submit supplemental information, you can do so for up to a week, which will be the close of business on Wednesday, March 29th. So you can be on the lookout for an email that has some additional information. Again, thank you so much for this really fantastic discussion, and we are really grateful. Great, and we will recess for lunch and return at 2:00 PM for our second panel. Thank you all.
Standby. Stream is now live.
Madam Chair, we are live, and you can, you can resume the hearing.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We will continue today's hearing with our second panel, which will be conducted in the same format as the first panel. A couple of reminders for those joining the hearing virtually, please keep the Zoom chat open. We'll use that chat to notify speakers when time is running out. In addition, for those who are here in person, please make sure that you're speaking directly into the microphones as we want to make sure that we have a full transcription of today's hearing. So our first panelist is Matthew Ho, a 2022 candidate for the United States Senate. He's here with us virtually, and Mr. Ho, I will tell you that you have already gotten a lot of kudos from everybody up here for your office and the color and decor. So it looks quite beautiful, and with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Yes.
I apologize, but this is a room blader ten out of ten.
It is. Yeah. Ten out of ten. Yeah, nailed it.
Thank you so much. I can't wait for my dogs to come in and disturb everything then. So, but thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for including me in this hearing today. I am grateful for the sincerity of this commission in addressing the need to expand the public's ability to participate in our electoral system. I believe revising the rules on candidate compensation in the ways being expressed today will broaden and deepen the pool of citizens in this country who will be eligible, excuse me, to run for federal office by removing financial and economic obstacles and restrictions on potential candidates and their family. Excuse me. Last year, I ran as a minor party candidate for the US Senate in North Carolina. Shortly after organizing a campaign committee, I sought clarification from the FEC as to whether my Veterans Disability Pension was considered earned or unearned income for the purposes of determining a candidate's salary. There was no ready answer to that question, so I filed for an advisory opinion and met with the commission in January of 2022. The commission determined the Veterans Disability Pension was unearned income, which is in line with the IRS definition of Veterans Disability Pension as unearned income. While I agree with the decision based on how the IRS defined unearned income, as well as limited FEC guidance on the topic, I recognize that such a restriction on candidate compensation could have a limiting effect on people who live with disabilities. I think my disability is instructive on how the current compensation rules are restrictive. The primary nature of my disability that precludes me from working and earning an income is a traumatic brain injury from my time in the Marine Corps in Iraq War. The migraines, extreme fatigue, and cognitive dysfunction that can manifest from the brain injury can and have prevented me from working. During one period, I went five years without being able to earn a paycheck. However, therapy, medicine, and a great team of doctors at the VA have allowed me over recent years to return to work, sometimes part-time, sometimes full-time. It's a difficult process as medical treatments will wear off, and it may take months to find a treatment that will help. So in 2019, 2020, and 2021, I was able to work during some months of those years. Halfway through 2021, I began a new course of treatment that has largely allowed me to be functional for the last eighteen months. The timing and running a political campaign was fortuitous, but if not for my Veteran Disability Pension, which most people with disabilities do not have, I would not have been able to financially afford to run for federal office due to my previous gaps in employment. Running full-time with a disability and having a second job would not have been possible for me, just as I believe it would not have been possible for many other people with disabilities. The benefits of amending the current regulations to allow for all candidates to receive a candidate's salary irrespective of their earned income from the previous year will open the political process to working and middle-class citizens and ensure people with disabilities, as well as people with other recent backgrounds, such as caregivers, students, retirees, missionaries, and a host of other experiences will be able to support themselves and their families while running for office. This benefit far exceeds the risk of people enriching themselves through candidate compensation. I also want to add, I fully support extending coverage of healthcare expenses to campaigns. Not being able to afford healthcare insurance for their family is an immediate disqualifier for anyone, for anyone with a family from running for federal office. Running competitively for federal office often means a year or longer campaign, and I don't know anyone who would sacrifice the security of their family's health for such an effort. As well, extending candidate compensation to begin six months prior to the primary election is absolutely necessary. This should include ballot access deadlines for independent and minor party candidates. Having led a successful statewide ballot access campaign in North Carolina, I can assure everyone that achieving ballot access is a full-time effort. Thank you for having me participate today. I appreciate the willingness of the FEC to expand access to electoral democracy to a larger segment of the population. I am very happy to answer any questions, particularly as to how this rule change would affect independent and minor party candidates.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your service. Next up, we have Nabila Islam, a former candidate for the House of Representatives and a current state senator from the state of Georgia. She's here with us in person. It's Islam.
Madam Chair and commissioners, my name is Nabila Islam, and I am currently a senator in the Georgia State Senate. During the 2020 cycle, I was a candidate for Congress and filed the petition for rulemaking after my campaign ended. I sincerely appreciate the time and effort of the commission and its staff in drafting the proposed rules, as well as the unanimous support of the commenters, who all agree that the commission's current regulations do not meet the needs of people who choose to run for office, and that the proposed changes would be a step toward changing that reality. I would also like to thank the commission for affording me the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss these issues further. I began this petition process almost exactly two years ago because I believe strongly that the current system for compensating federal candidates favors those with the means to go without a paycheck or health insurance for months on end. The result is that working people are underrepresented in Congress because they simply cannot afford to run for office. During the 2020 cycle, I announced my candidacy in February 2019. And for the sixteen months that followed, I was thrust into a state of financial uncertainty. I could barely pay my rent or utilities, I could not afford health insurance, I placed my student loans in forbearance, and I depleted my savings just to pay for the bare necessity. All of that financial strife was a result of the current framework for compensating federal candidates. Despite beginning my campaign in February 2019, I was unable to receive a salary until March 6th of 2020, which was Georgia's primary ballot qualification deadline. My lack of income during that time hurt my ability to afford health insurance because I could not pay the premiums. This situation was barely feasible for me and is completely unsustainable for most other working-class Americans, which is why I filed the petition for rulemaking. Turning to the proposed rules, as I noted in my written comments, I urge the commission to implement a modified version of Alternative F for the salary cap and either Alternative A or B for the compensation definition. I'm in full support of the other proposed changes and would like to voice particular support for the expansion of the eligibility period. However, I strongly believe that healthcare, independent care expenses should not be counted towards the compensation cap. For the salary cap, I would urge the commission to choose Alternative F, but to replace the minimum wage piece with the minimum salary approach in Alternative A. Doing so would allow candidates to receive a salary equal to half the minimum salary for the office sought, if the amount is greater than the candidate's average income over the past three years. A salary based on the minimum wage is simply insufficient to support the out-of-pocket expenses required to work as a full-time candidate. For the compensation definition, Alternatives A and B would both help ensure that the candidate and their campaign staff have the option to receive health insurance. In the US, most Americans, health insurance is received from their employer, and no one should have to voluntarily give up that precious resource just to run for office or work on a campaign. The rules proposed here would build upon the commission's first steps taken nearly twenty years ago when it passed the existing regulations. If we want a representative democracy with lawmakers that share our lived experiences, we need to eliminate the financial barriers that prevent so many qualified Americans from running for office. With that, I thank you for your time and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. And next up is Odessa Kelly, a former candidate for the House of Representatives. She's here with us in person. Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Odessa Kelly. I am a working mom, a community organizer, and a proud member of SEIU Local 205. I strongly support these amendments, and I am honored to be here today to tell you my story. In 2019, I was first approached by Justice Democrats to consider running for US Congress after being recommended by hundreds of people across this country who are familiar with me and my work as a community activist and organizer. From March 2006 through August of 2019, I spent every day working on the front lines of poverty as a civil servant for the city of Nashville as an employee of Parks and Recreation. I became a parent at the very young age of twenty-four. I don't even know if I was truly an adult at that time, and got my first apartment soon after. A typical day for me was waking up at 5:30 AM every morning to make breakfast, get kids up and off to school, spend my mornings with seniors playing bridge and cutthroat spades, and then transition to the afternoon and running one of the best after-school programs that the city of Nashville has ever seen, and in between then passing out food boxes to working people. Every night, for close to ten years, I also went to FedEx. That was a warehouse where I humped every day, four to five hours, throwing box, boxes, I mean, packages and boxes into trucks. And after years of busting in my butt to try to survive, I went back to school to obtain my master's degree in public administration in an effort to move up the ladder in management. I'll never forget receiving my first management paycheck because it was at that moment that I realized that I had just accumulated over $50,000 in college loans just to make $38,000 a year. I loved my job. I worked in an occupation that had been deemed critical to, to be provided to the public. But somehow, I was supposed to raise kids, pay bills, my college loans, and save money to buy a house in one of the fastest-growing cities in, in America, the place where I was born and raised, the place there's a case study of gentrification and is currently displacing its working class. I give you this context because my story is the same as millions of Americans across this country. It's what made me a good organizer and an activist, and it what makes me the kind of leader that so many in my community wanted to elect. When I was approached to run for Congress for the first time and had to turn it down, I felt like a failure. It had been my job to be engaged in all of Nashville's communities. The successes and failures that I had garnered through my career as a public employee had well-prepared me to take on the highest level of civil service. But when I looked at the numbers, I knew that my family simply could not afford for me to step away. We needed every paycheck to stay afloat. That was the only time in my life that I ever felt unpatriotic. I'd been raised to take pride in doing well by others, to make provisions for those who needed it, and to be in service to my brethren. I was ashamed that I could not live up to being the best version of myself because I was simply a member of the working class. I launched my congressional campaign April fifth, two thousand twenty-one, not because I had suddenly become wealthy, but because the needs of my community had become too dire for me to ignore. With the support of my union, family, friends, and the endorsement of organizations like Justice Democrats, the Collective PAC, and Way to Win, I was able to launch my campaign, continue to work full-time, and campaign in the rest of the time. They only asked me about getting sleep. We had launched that early because it was challenging. It was going to be a challenge to take on one of the longest-serving members of Congress, thirty-nine years he had served, who also at the time was one of the richest men in Tennessee and had a nearly a million dollars in campaign money on the day that we had just launched our campaign. We knew it would take me, an individual of my background, at least fifteen months to campaign and fundraise just enough money to cover the essentials needed to run a solid campaign. And to and to run a solid campaign. I worked my full-time job from the launch in April through January of two thousand twenty-two. Those eight months were some of the most grueling and difficult months in my life, and that's considering that we had just came out of the trials and tribulations of a global pandemic. I put my heart and soul into that campaign, but the reality is you can't give a hundred percent when you're working for a full-time job. I took a leave of absence around March of two thousand twenty-two so I could campaign full-time and didn't receive a salary from the campaign until May of two thousand twenty-two. I didn't get a paycheck for nearly two months because I was afraid that was money I was taking from a field organizer or another position I may need. Think about that. In a nation where most Americans don't have enough savings to cover a thousand dollars in emergency funds, having to take the time to take off without income is a huge barrier for running for office. Running for office to represent my community in Congress was a tremendous honor, and I wanted to give the campaign everything I had, but I'm still paying that debt off, even the debts I accumulated through those two months. I should be a U.S. Representative right now. Do you realize that Nashville is nearly one million people? It is the largest and most populated city in Tennessee, yet we have no reflection, zero representation at our highest level in the U.S. Congress. I lost my bid to represent my city mostly due to redistricting and gerrymandering, but the burden of salary cannot be dismissed in this equation. I ask that this commission do its part to preserve our democracy by improving the salary rules for candidates, which will in turn create more balance for those like myself who share the lived experiences of the majority of Americans to represent our country at its highest levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Shreena Karani, a former candidate for the House of Representatives. She's here with us in person. For George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the importance of improving access to representation and removing barriers for everyday working Americans to serve our communities and our country. My name is Shreena Karani, and I'm a native of Riverside, California, where I was born and raised and where I ran for United States Congress in two thousand twenty-two in California's forty-first congressional district. I'm an engineer and an entrepreneur, having built companies addressing issues in our food systems, the water quality, and addressing financial inequality. And I'm now the managing partner of Snowcap, a venture capital firm focused on deeply scientific technologies to address climate change that will enable us to live in a safer and a healthier world. I'm here to address the proposed changes to the Federal Election Commission's regulations due to my expertise and personal experience as a candidate. I also want to clearly state that I am in full support of proposed changes to allow candidates, as it passes the irrespective test, to have financial support earlier in the campaign cycle and up to the minimum office holder salary with a reduction for other earned income in order to combat the incumbency advantage which preserves the status quo. Were it not for the passion for serving our communities and accompanying campaign responsibilities, candidates would not have to leave their jobs and give up their salaries and employment benefits, and consequently, our representation in federal office becomes limited to those who can afford it. I'm the daughter of immigrants who came to America with less than thirty dollars in their pockets. I learned from my dad that it's our duty to serve our communities, and I watched him serve as a planning commissioner, a local chamber of commerce, and after almost a decade of community service, he ran for city council while running a brick-and-mortar small business, canvassing in the evenings because our store was open seven days a week, which meant my parents didn't take a single day off for over ten years. I saw firsthand the sacrifices my parents had to make and how already then, as a small business owner, he struggled to both provide for his family and meet the demands of a campaign. Fast forward fifteen years. While building a company to democratize access to capital for underrepresented entrepreneurs, I launched my campaign for United States Congress against a thirty-year incumbent who makes that minimum a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, while in the same year combined with my income combined with my husband was under a hundred. I filed my statement of organization with the commission sixteen months before the general election and eleven months before the primary, and began dedicating over twenty hours a week while working full-time. Through my work, as I was focused on facilitating hundreds of millions of dollars to underrepresented entrepreneurs across the country, I acknowledged the discrepancy in support for underrepresented candidates. I would begin my outreach at six in the morning to supporters across the country in different time zones for three hours before beginning my workday and again after work until nine P.M. to reach constituents on the West Coast. Five to six days a week, which was almost a full-time job on its own. Eight months before the election, my schedule included thirty hours of fundraising call time a week while working over forty hours a week for my company and dedicating nights and weekends to community outreach. Six months before the primary, I had to step down from my company because it was necessary for me to ramp down to forty hours a week, or sorry, ramp up to forty hours a week for just call time, not to mention preparing for candidate forums, attending events, but for outreach and canvassing, which would average eighty hours a week. My story is not easy. These are the trade-offs everyday Americans who are active members of our communities have to make when campaigning to represent our hometowns on the federal level. I wasn't aware that I could take a salary during the campaign, and so my husband and I tapped into our savings. And as I now support women and people of color across the country who have yet to put their hat in the ring, they're struggling to balance jobs with starting their campaigns with the fear that if they quit, won't be able to pay rent. Personally, as I look forward to the future in mine and my husband's current financial situation, we would likely have to go into debt to run another campaign if the rules were not changed. So realistically, the financial cost would prohibit me from running again. According to the Census Bureau in two thousand twenty-one, the median per capita income in Riverside County where I ran was thirty-two thousand dollars. The general election candidate raised over three million. So for someone who makes thirty-two thousand when they're working full-time, that would encompass just one percent of total campaign funding, but allow a candidate to pay rent, take care of their basic expenses while working on average eighty hours a week. The Federal Election Campaign Act prohibits the personal use of campaign funds for good reason, and I am in support of the act's irrespective test, as it stands to provide benefits including salary that would otherwise be in place. In conclusion, the time commitment of campaigning for federal office does not allow candidates to work a full-time job, and the potential financial impact makes it impossible for many people to even run. While the current rules, quote, "help ensure that campaign salaries are not used to enrich candidates," end quote, the unfortunate reality is that the current campaign landscape benefits rich candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fifth and final panelist this afternoon is Yuba Gretchen Shirley, a former candidate for the House of Representatives. She's here with us in person.
Thank you very much. My name is, can you guys hear me with this? My name is Yuba Gretchen Shirley. I'm a former congressional candidate and the founder and CEO of Vote Mama. Thank you for including me today on this panel and for considering these proposed rule changes that build upon my two thousand eighteen FEC ruling to make it easier for working parents, to make it easier for working people to run for office. In two thousand eighteen, I ran to represent New York's second congressional district against a nearly thirty-year incumbent. And my kids were just one and three at the time. My mom was still teaching. She would come home every day at three-thirty, and she would watch my kids, and I had two toddlers in tow all day. I would be nursing my son while my daughter put a million hair clips in my hair, and I would be during call time. And for six months, I built forts, and I changed diapers, and I baked lunch, and I dealt with two tiny babies, and I had a phone, not a phone, but a headset attached to my head, and I raised money to run against somebody who had been there for nearly thirty years. My schedule was unsustainable, but so was picking up the cost of childcare after giving up my salary to run for office. We were struggling to make ends meet during that entire campaign. Six months into my campaign, I submitted a request to ask if I could use some of the funds that I was raising for my campaign on childcare. I was told that I was crazy. I was told it was political suicide. I was told that everybody was going to attack me for being a woman and a mother, and I did it anyway. And I remember coming into this room and seeing Commissioner Weintraub and being genuinely terrified that it would be the last day of my campaign. My children were running around the back of this room. I had a really hilarious video of it, and I didn't know if you would approve my request. And there was no way I could continue the campaign without childcare. It was impossible. To my surprise, you issued a unanimous bipartisan decision, and you changed the way that working parents run for office. And we have now seen over fifty federal candidates use their campaign funds for childcare, dads and moms, Democrats and Republicans. Five years ago, I sat right here and I submitted testimony in strong support of ensuring that candidates would be able to use campaign funds for childcare. Now, I am asking you to allow federal candidates to use their campaign funds to pay themselves a livable wage, to cover dependent care expenses as well, and to pay for health insurance. Childcare obligations are one of the major factors that families consider when making a decision to run for office, and it is the number one factor that moms make. I was asked by many people in my district, what do we need to do to convince you to run right now? And I remember laughing and thinking, well, I need childcare, and I didn't think it was a possibility. After my campaign, I launched Vote Mama to build the political power of moms across the country and to break down the structural and the cultural barriers that moms face when they run and when they serve. I know firsthand these barriers, and I have now worked with over four hundred moms running across the country. And the number one question every mother gets asked is who will watch your kids while you campaign? Men don't get asked that question. Every single woman does. Vote Mama Foundation is the only organization working with legislators across the country to now expand my FEC ruling for state and local candidates. Our goal is to get all fifty states to approve the use of campaign funds for childcare and dependent care for state and local candidates. As of today, twenty-eight states have now approved the use of campaign funds for childcare. In two thousand twenty-three alone, Vote Mama Foundation has worked with Republican and Democratic legislators to introduce nineteen bills in thirteen states to allow the use of campaign funds for childcare. Eight of those states also include coverage for broader dependent care. Vote Mama Foundation has helped pass campaign funds for depending care expenses specifically in six states, Colorado, Illinois, Kentucky, Vermont, Washington, and West Virginia. The coverage of dependent care expenses is particularly important for candidates in the sandwich generation, for those who are caring for young children and our aging parents. Women are disproportionately more likely to assume caregiving responsibilities in both sets of circumstances and are more likely to not run because of the burden of caregiving. In the last month, I've spoken with two candidates, two potential candidates. Both were single mothers. One had two daughters, and one has a son and an aging mother. Both were set to run. One had actually launched her campaign. One was about to. And they both realized that because of their caregiving responsibilities, it wouldn't be possible, and they decided not to run. And yet, those are exactly the voices that we need in Congress because they understand these issues. Justice candidates need to be able to use campaign funds for childcare and dependent care. They need to earn a livable wage. I had to quit my job to run full-time while still being a mother full-time, and being able to hire an on-staff babysitter made a huge difference, but it wasn't enough. This system, as we have heard very clearly today, was not designed for working people to run for office. It was designed to keep wealthy people in power. Most people do not realize how difficult it is to run a campaign. It takes a year to two years of your life, eighteen hours a day minimum. We don't realize right now that there are more millionaires in Congress than there are moms of minor children. There are more men named John in the Senate than moms of minor children. Candidates would need to save up to two years of living expenses just to make ends meet, to run for office. That's not feasible for most Americans. That is why we have a government that is not really truly representative of our society. By allowing candidates to pay themselves a living salary from their privately raised campaign funds, the U.S. has an opportunity to completely transform the political landscape. If we want to change our policies, we have to change who has a seat at the table. Candidates should also be able to take their salaries from their campaign from the day that they file and have raised enough money to afford to do so, not from the time that they make the ballot, because most candidates are running for at least a year before they make the ballot. And that makes it incredibly difficult for anyone to be able to do that if you are not independently wealthy. The level of salary, as everyone here has also said, should not be tied to what they earned the previous year because that leaves out caregivers. That leaves out someone who had a child. That leaves out someone who was taking care of an aging parent, somebody who was a student, somebody had a medical issue. Your salary should not be tied to what you made the year before. I spoke on a panel with other two thousand eighteen candidates who came close to winning right after my campaign, and somebody in the audience asked the question. They said, who plans to run again? And we went down the panel, and everybody except for one person said they couldn't afford to. Someone had maxed out their credit cards. Someone had taken a second mortgage on their house. I took a lot of money out of my retirement account. None of us were able to. And one of those candidates came up to me afterwards, and she said, when you run again, can you please make a big deal as you did about childcare, but do it about taking a salary? Because if you do that, I might be able to eventually step up and run again. Federal candidates should be able to use their campaign funds to also pay for health insurance premiums and other related benefits. There are candidates running for office across the country without access to healthcare, and this is a major failing of our system, and it's unacceptable, especially during a global pandemic. We, five years ago, I sat here and I testified before the FEC so that we could make it easier for parents to run for office, and now I'm asking you to please expand that ruling to make it easier, to break down further structural barriers so that we can have more working people in office. We have more millionaires in Congress, and we don't have enough everyday people, people who actually understand how these issues affect people's lives, people who understand how most Americans live their lives. I am asking you to break down these structural barriers. I am happy to answer any questions, and I thank you very much for your ruling in two thousand eighteen and for considering these proposed changes.
Thank you, and thank you all for telling us your story. Often at this agency, we're dealing things in abstract terms and hypotheticals, but by you telling your story, putting yourself out there, it really does help us have these conversations. You also serve as a wealth of information on how these campaigns are actually run, how hard it is to raise money, how much time call time takes. And I'm really interested to see the questions that my colleagues are going to have for you, and I will, just before I toss it over to them, I will also just thank you for making this really a movement. Many of you have really started this. You have raised the alarm. You know, San La Rifa in two thousand eighteen, this was something we were very, very proud to do and to start, and it really kicked off a lot of changes across the country. And it took a client to get that moving, and then again, it just continued. So thank you all, and we really appreciate that. So I will start off with Commissioner Broussard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of join in your comments, I think one of the things we first should say is what a great representation for national women women walk amongst the likes of politics. So just looking in, thank you, Mr. Hertz, because you get roped into that great group. So thank you all for being here today, and of course, the things that the folks have done. I want to kind of jump into a question about the health insurance premiums and dependent care. First, I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly, Ms. Shirley, excuse me. I see Ms. Kelly, but it'd go down the line if anyone else would like to jump in. Let's say that a candidate Let's let's say that a candidate is about to draw a hundred percent of the office of their office from their campaign committee. Tell me why you think they should still be able to get dependent care if they're getting a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars salary? And if you think so, let's think about it like this. Healthcare and premiums, as everyone has testified, we generally find those tied to employment. So we see that connection, but it's not generally the same for dependent care costs. So is that enough of a distinction that we should be thinking about? That becomes a cost that's taken directly out of your individual obligation? Or as we do now in your instance, is it tied specifically to a campaign or office?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I cannot tell you of a single candidate who would want to take a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars out of their campaign to pay themselves a salary and then on top of that pay for their childcare or dependent care or healthcare. Most people don't want to spend that money because any money you take out of your campaign is money you can't spend to win. People don't run for office because they want to take a salary. They run for office because they want to serve their constituents. So I can understand that question. I don't think it's something that you will be faced with. And frankly, if somebody does do that, it should be up to that person to decide what their needs are. We don't know what their needs are. I don't think we should be making a decision on how much they can take in terms of whether or not their salary is a hundred and seventy-four, whether or not they have childcare on top of that. I made the comment once during my campaign, a reporter asked me about my babysitter. And I was serious and I said, my babysitter is as important to my campaign as my campaign manager, which my campaign manager didn't love, but it was true. She was a member of our staff. She was paid like the rest of our staff and she was necessary for us to run that campaign. But no one is going to want to abuse that because it hurts their chances of winning. They will want to take what they can to survive.
Chair, so in thinking about it from a candidate's perspective, would you consider a good need for a call for incumbents? Or should they be allowed to be a little bit?
I actually, I think that this should only be for first-time candidates. Incumbents have a salary. They are campaigning all the time and they have a salary. They don't have the same problem. They make their income, they earn their income and they're doing call time around the clock. When you are in office, you still do twenty-five hours of call time a week. You're still raising up those funds. So I don't think that taking a salary, I still do think that you should be able to use campaign funds for childcare out of your campaign account. But I don't think you need to take a salary because you already have a salary and you already have health benefits. But I fully agree with being able to still use your campaign funds for childcare for incumbents. And dependent care.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But I just ask a, well, first of all, let me thank you all for incredible presentation of your stories and for sharing them with us. It really enriches our understanding. And as the chair said, it's very different from usual kind of testimony that we get here from a group of Washington inside a lawyer's who are arguing about some paragraphs of the regulations, which we will have to deal with. But I want to ask a clarifying question, Ms. Shirley, and it's a pleasure to see you again. You said you thought it should only be for first-time candidates. Did you mean non-incumbents?
Non-incumbents, yes, not first-time. I meant non-incumbents, just for the salary. I am fully in support of campaign funds for childcare and dependent care, even if you're an incumbent. But you earn a salary when you're incumbent. If you're already there and you're earning a salary, I don't think you need to pay yourself an additional salary from your campaign funds.
I think my question might have been unclear. Not an intention for any incumbent to take a salary in a check that they're already getting from. So with that understanding that we're not expecting the incumbent to be looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, do you think that they should be entitled to still use campaign funds for childcare, dependent care expenses?
I do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, thank you. I'll join the chorus. So I am a lawyer by training, so I'm used to showing up at things like this, but I recognize that appearing in front of a federal commission and having big legally fraught conversations may not be, I'll just say comfortable. So I appreciate all of you taking the time to do it. I just want to ask some factual questions because, you know, I have written comments from some of you, but not all of you, and I've read all of those. Senator, as long as I want to especially thank you because I thought from the range of comments, your sort of approach to the candidate salary cap was, well, very thoughtful. So I don't know where we'll end up, but I appreciated you kind of wrestling with these these questions that we were talking about on the first panel. So I have answers from some of you from your openings, but what, for those of you who have not yet commented, and I think, Ms. Kelly, you may not have taken a position. What do you think is the appropriate cap? We're hearing a lot about the level of pay for a member of Congress as being the appropriate cap. In my previous panel, those of you who didn't see, I kind of pointed out that maybe the job of a member of Congress and a member and a candidate are different in part because you have to maintain two households. Do you have a view on this?
Commissioner, I don't. Yeah, I think I'm in support of the amendment and raising it, and that's the reason why I gave the context. I think policy doesn't always stand up smoothly in how it applies and how it could be applicable. Me being a black woman from a working poor background and taking a job in civil service was never going to get rich. That was never my dream to get rich. But me running against a cisgender white male who came from means before he even ran for office, it already causes an imbalance. So we ask about what is appropriate. I think it's appropriate to consider what we're saying, not because we're trying to make extra money, but because we want to run good, solid campaigns. Now, as far as the cap of matching to where a candidate is, I think earlier we had individuals talking about looking at it from a market value posed versus the opportunity growth. And I agree with that just because one seventy-four gives you the margins. So I heard you giving a lot of what-ifs and respect, understanding, I have to take those into considerations. But I think it's more feasible to approach it from what's practically happened.
If I may, my other question is the other side of this, which is the duration. And I think I'm hearing unanimity, but I just want to make sure the record's clear. As I think you all know, the current regulation is, you know, when you have to file under the state law is the beginning point. I guess I can just ask for a show of hands. Is there anyone who does not think that the filing of the candidacy form with the commission should be the starting date?
For clarity, you mean to receive a salary?
Become eligible to receive a salary.
May I say more?
Of course, yeah.
So again, I launched my campaign August fifth of 2021. The filing date was April seventh. I'm sorry, I launched April fifth of 2021. The filing date was April seventh of 2022. The reason we had to start so early is because everyone knows that you have to have money to run a solid campaign for all the reasons pay staff, go tit-for-tat, right? And a lot of this was for the last thirty and forty-five days, you want to be able to get on TV and radio and do as much touches as you possibly can. Well, I couldn't turn, when I first started campaigning during the call time she was talking about and asking family members and friends, I gave out more twenty-dollar bills than I collected. And I say that not to be funny, but to be realistic. There was no one who could, I couldn't write myself fifty thousand dollars to float me until I started gaining some momentum or those things. And so we had to start that far out so that we could just get raise enough money to be able to have just the solid things that you need in a campaign, a campaign manager, a field organizer, and the ability to pay people to do comps and all those things to give you the visibility to be relevant in a ways.
So your preference would be eligibility at the moment you set up your campaign committee? Or is there another trigger that you have in mind?
I don't know if I have a set date in mind, but I think that the reality is that we want to have equity and representation for people across the United States, then we need to be realistic about we need, not everyone is going to come from means and there are working-class individuals who want to run for office.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify my position that I do agree with the date being the filing of the statement of organization. I think that, at least, and from my understanding of the existing FEC rules outside of how you have to be campaigning, when you can start fundraising and all of that, was roughly, we filed our papers as we actually launched our campaign. And so to me, that would be a fair trigger point.
Yeah, I, these rule changes level the playing field. When I launched my campaign, there was another man who had already gotten into the primary, who was a multimillionaire, who had donated a million dollars to himself, who did not need a salary and nobody took him seriously. They all said, let's support this man. He has a million dollars to spend on his campaign. He didn't know any of the policies and he ended up dropping out a month later. But the point is that changing this so that when you can start taking a salary when you first launch your campaign, everything that proves that you have strength as a candidate comes down to fundraising. If you don't have the ability to spend that early time fundraising, you're dead in the water. I was told in the beginning, you have to raise a hundred thousand dollars before anyone will take you seriously. I had two babies and had spent my career working in nonprofits. I had no idea how I was going to do that, but I did. But the point is you need that time and so many, so, and we even heard today that so many people continue to work their full-time jobs while campaigning in the beginning because they have to, and then they step back. If you had the ability to pay yourself a salary right away, once you start raising enough, you have the ability to sit and do thirty hours of call time. And that's necessary to actually show that you are a strong candidate and can actually challenge whoever you're running against. Without that, no one takes you seriously and you lose momentum.
One of the questions and one of the discussions we had this morning was about, you know, protecting against grifters, right? You know, people that are going to use this to do the process. We certainly see that in the PAC context where we have people that may be setting up PACs and pocketing the money and putting them through their LLCs. And I'd like to understand from you all how realistic you think that would be for somebody to go about trying to pretty much make money off running for office like this. So if you'd like to, I'm not going to, you know, ask to go down a line, but do you know how much you, your campaign raised? How many hours of call time did you spend and how hard was it?
I am. So I raised about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for my congressional campaign and I made over ten thousand phone calls. They have figured out a way to make humans make insane amount of calls every day and I did that. And so that being said, these salary benefits are not a subsidy, right? We still have to pick up the phone and cold call. I don't have, and I did not have, like, you know, a lot of, I don't come from a rich background. So like literally, it was like small dollar donations. And so it's extremely hard to raise this money and I did it over sixteen months, including during a pandemic. And you, and I would also say that there is transparency because, you know, you still have to file with the FEC every quarter. So you can see how much you're getting in salary benefits. And then with that being said, I think people would quickly realize if it was a grift and also you have to run a real campaign. When you pitch people, it's like they want to know your campaign plan. They want to know who's on your team. They want to know like, you know, what's your path to victory? And if you don't have those things, people are not going to give you money. And so I don't think that this will lead to, if people do try to grift, they're going to fail. And so, but I'm not worried about that.
I raised a little over two million dollars and I was doing thirty hours, forty hours of call time a week. My son, who was one at the time, broke his leg and ended up in a body cast and I didn't take a break from call time. I had a baby in a body cast nursing with a headset on. There is no way to take a break from raising money and run a successful campaign. I would do call time all day. I would go to events. I would go to candidate forums. I would go home and put my children to sleep and my staff would come to my house and make me call California. And I would call all hours of the day and night, and that is what I did for a year and a half. We have grifters currently in Congress. The current rules do not protect us from electing grifters. This rule change allows working people to have a chance to get into Congress, to have a chance, a fighting chance to represent people in their district. I'm not worried about anyone trying to run for Congress to earn an income because it is hell. You give up your entire existence to a group of young people who are these amazing staff members, but they control your life. You don't have time to do anything with any of your friends or family and that is what you give up to run for Congress. No one will do that. And call time, especially when you have to do cold calls, it's really uncomfortable. You have to sit there and introduce yourself and tell them why you're running and tell them exactly, as Navina just said, how you're going to win. No one will do that to pay themselves a salary. It is a lot easier to get a different job and to not have to go through that.
Yeah, so again, I was a minor party candidate and the difference in terms of fundraising for independents or minor party candidates is really drastic. We don't have the networks. We don't have the infrastructure. There's no act blue. So as well as to your staffing, you do not have staffing you can rely upon. So for independent and minor party candidates, you are doing a lot more, I think, I don't want to presume, but you are doing a lot more than major party candidates. The idea of being able to devote yourselves just strictly to fundraising as an independent or minor party candidate, it doesn't exist because you are doing so many other things. You're doing your social media. You know, you may have a legal issue that you have to deal with directly, you know, and then particularly if you are trying to get on a ballot through ballot access. I wasn't on the ballot until August, right? So, you know, the idea that you have this time where you want to campaign, people are going to give you money when you're not even on the ballot yet. So you have these other aspects of fundraising for minor party independent candidates that comes back to this idea of how full-time is this for someone running as a, you know, a non-major party candidate? I think the issue with the expenses, my view on this is to go back to a couple of other questions, is I think all this should be treated just simply as campaign expenditures. You know, the idea that this is a campaign expenditure, just as any other form of campaign expenditure, is no different than putting gasoline in your car or paying for airtime on the radio or paying for staffer. I will also say, just give you an anecdote about one of the things too for minor independent party candidates that make it difficult, and it is in some ways preventative because we don't have the expertise in terms of dealing with the FEC. So you do not have the professional treasurers. You do not have the professional campaign managers who have the experience in terms of the reporting requirements, in terms of the regulations, in terms of the guidelines. Just from my own experience, in terms of the money here, in terms of personal money. My sewer line in my house went out the week after the election. Anyone who's ever had their sewer line back up into the bathtub, and that was exactly what I'm talking about. Not something, anyone, I don't want to wish that on anybody, right? Thank God it happened after the election because I didn't have the money in my bank account to get that fixed. If it happened before the election, I wouldn't have been, I would have been scared to death to take money from my family to pay to fix that. Because I would have felt like, oh my God, I am in danger here of violating some rule of receiving compensation from an outside source while I'm running a federal campaign. You know, and whether or not that would have been the case, I didn't know. I didn't want to take a chance. I didn't want to take that risk. So I think when you're looking at folks who are coming in from the outside to campaign, again, other independents or minor parties, there's a lot of considerations. One of the things I've found as I've met other people who've done this around the country is that they are so afraid of the reporting requirements that they don't raise money. And then, of course, all they then are are paper candidate and that's not very serious. That's not competitive. And it really is doing a disservice, I think, to the electoral system. So I think any way we can, we can make this process simpler, easier to understand, easier to approach from the outside, while still maintaining the requirement for regulation and oversight, because absolutely, there are going to be people who cheat. But I think that the benefit of expanding this, as my fellow panelists have done such an amazing job of articulating, the benefit of expanding access to our electoral system far outweighs the risk of somebody trying to make some money off of it.
Commissioner Broussard. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to go to something that Mr. Ho mentioned and something that we've talked about before when the chair asked about the grifters and worrying about the grifters. The, if you chose to take candidate salaries and you would take it at the time you're allowed to, you know, the ballot access or when the primary is coming, you have to report this and you have to report, maybe you might, maybe your salary would have matched up. You're taking seven thousand dollars a month. Maybe your salary wouldn't have matched up to something on the lower end or maybe it matched up to zero. As former candidates, did you have a concern that if you did accept a salary that someone, your constituents, like, people are going to look at this and that they were going, or maybe the incumbent challenger was going to make this an argument against you? So did that have in the back of your mind kind of a safe word to tell you, if I took it, be careful? Maybe don't take too much. Maybe not take as much as I'm entitled to. I'd like to know from your experience if you had any of those considerations. Thank you.
I, to be frank, I originally felt shame, embarrassed. And, but as I ran for office, I quickly realized that And, uh, but as I ran for office, I quickly realized that I wasn't the only person going through this. And, um, after, you know, I learned that this, the way that the current framework is set up isn't, um, it doesn't, it makes it harder for working people to run for office and, you know, run a sustainable campaign, let alone a sustainable life. And so, um, there, it should be normalized that, uh, candidates should be able to not have to go broke when they run for office. You should not have to go through financial destruction in order to represent your community. And so, um, while, I, I, I think this is the benefit of us all, all sharing our stories is that people need to know the reason that we don't have reflective representation of our diversity or value, values or economic diversity in Congress. It's because we can't afford to get there. So, um, there might be political consequences in the beginning, but I truly believe that this is a necessary fix that needs to be done in order to help our democracy.
Go ahead. I just wanted to quickly share that I actually didn't know that I could take a salary. And, uh, reflecting on the fact that I could have, as much as I'm fully advocating for this, I feel like the entire team around me would have told me not to because it would have reflected poorly on my campaign. And so when we talk about grifters, I was just making some notes. I did over fifteen hundred hours of call time. If you're stealing money from, you're ripping off at least initially your friends and family. And then you're spending a lot of time in a really inefficient process. It, it's really, no one wants to do this, right? So I think that's just something to recognize is the time, the input that goes into it. There's, there's a lot better ways to make money. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, and then also wanted to double down on the, the reporting and transparency piece because I do think there are good practices in place that make sure that we report all of our expenditures, everything going out. Um, and so, you know, that, that's all public information and that's something that you will be held accountable to.
Sure. Um, it stressed me out. It, it definitely did. I think even after I had realized that I could take a salary, I did not want to for those reasons that, uh, everyone else just expressed. And also too, it, I, um, me and my cabinet, people who were close to me in the campaign, we argued over it a lot, you know, for those reasons. Um, of whether it would look poorly in me taking the campaign. But the reality is, is by, what's, someone earlier spoke of the catch twenty-two. You know, you can either, you have to be all in if you're going to run a solid campaign is, is all you know. And it's impossible to be all in and work a full-time job. You just can't do it. It is also crazy to, or thinking that it's the patriotic thing to garner a bunch of credit card debt or get a possible lien on your home. Or as I did, ask your children not to participate in their after-school activities so you can have that extra income to go toward a campaign.
You will be politically attacked no matter what. People will absolutely use it against you. It is a political liability. We do have to normalize it. Even after you approve the use of campaign funds for childcare, we have been working with candidates across the country who are afraid to use it because their staff told them not to, because they will be politically attacked. People found out when my daughter went to daycare. They looked at my FEC filings and they called her daycare center. And that happened to other candidates as well. And there were other congressional candidates who ran the cycle after me, who they were afraid of actually putting the location and the place where they were spending money because they didn't want their children to be harassed. It is a reality that people will find out where you're spending this money because everything is public. Even if you make this rule change, people will still want to not take as much as they can because people will talk about it. It will be everywhere. People will write about it. Your opponent will use it against you. But the reality is the more that we talk about the structural barriers, the cultural barriers, how difficult it is, the more we normalize it. Nobody used to talk about being a mom and trying to manage children on the campaign trail. Now we're talking about it because we need more moms in Congress. We need more moms at all levels of government. We have policies that are failing families in this country because we don't have people with the lived experience and legislators legislate on lived experience. So yes, that is a political reality. You will be attacked. We have to do it anyway.
Commissioner Duffin. Thank you. Um, first of all, I've been, I've been cautioned by one of my colleagues that I look really grumpy. I actually just am working on three kids under five, so I hear you. I'm not actually as grumpy as I look. I'm just exhausted. Um, so well, Shirley, you said something very interesting and I want to follow up on it because but there have been two things here that are very interesting to me that are kind of unrelated to whatever final rule we were to adopt. One is, Ms. Karani, your point about not knowing what the rules are and this sort of confusion about them, which I will say is terrifying because you strike me as very well informed. Um, so I guess a general question to everyone, regardless of what rules adopted, what can the commission do, especially for first-time candidates, especially to the less sophisticated or, you know, third party? I used to represent the LNC, so I'm going to reject the title minor party. Um, but you know, the, you know, what, what can we do to publicize whatever it is that we do end up adopting, one? And two, um, I think it's a real cautionary tale, Mr. Shirley, about, you know, people looking up where your children are going to daycare. Um, you know, I take the point on transparency, but I wonder, you know, now this is off the cuff, this is in any of the comments, it's not in the NPRM, but to the extent any of you have views on uh, what the commission could lawfully do to preserve the privacy of their, uh, their children, I would be interested in any thoughts.
The candidate that I mentioned that didn't want to put it down, she actually did not include the name of her childcare center. And I remember sitting with her and talking and she was really worried that she was going to get in trouble and she didn't get in trouble. So I think that is the best thing that you can do, that you can put this as a childcare expenditure, but not have to put the location of your child's daycare center. It keeps those children protected. That particular candidate was running for senate and her children, on Halloween, people drove by her house and threw candy, not in a nice way, but threw candy at her children who were toddlers at the time. And she said, this has happened to my kids. I don't, she was very nervous to put that, to put the location of her child's childcare center, and she didn't. So talking about it is one of the best ways that you can help normalizing it. Um, I remember leaving the commission that day thinking, when we drove down here, I thought Glamour magazine was going to cover it and that was it. By the end of the day, every press outlet in the country had covered it and I was genuinely shocked. I was outside with my children at a museum while I was outside on the phone with reporters and everyone talked about it. And that's what we need to do. We're going to normalize it. The more people use campaign funds for childcare, the more it will be just, just the norm. Vote on the Foundation publishes a report looking at the expenditures of childcare, looking at who is spending their campaign funds on childcare, moms and dads and Democrats and Republicans. And it has gone up every single election cycle since 2018. And making that something that we talk about, that's how we're going to actually change it. Because there is this stigma. Technically, you can use a salary right now. You can take a salary. The rules are not great around it, but no one wants to do it. They don't do it because they will get politically attacked. So the more of us who stay up here and stand up here and tell our story, and if you approve this ruling and you approved all of these proposed rule changes and you talk about it to the press and you say this is how we get working people into office, this is a change that will literally change the political landscape. You are doing a huge service to everyone in this country.
Let me ask some more direct question. Um, I mean, part of the problem here is that this whole conversation is taking place against an extremely complicated and contested legal background. And we are bound by law as a federal agency, and that's just hard. That's just true. So my, my, I guess more specific question is, you know, especially to those of you who have thought about this and you've all been candidates, are there ways in which we can try to preserve the privacy of things like daycare, things like personal services in a way that would, as you say, normalize these sort of things by lowering the personal risks that's being taken on by candidates? Or is that sort of an ancillary kind of conversation?
Specifically for childcare?
Because your example has seen the most obvious.
Yeah, uh, I don't think there's anything you can do if you have a babysitter or a nanny on, on your staff because you're paying a direct person. I do think there can be a rule change, and I don't know the legal background behind this, but if you could have a rule change that if you have a child in a childcare center, you can just say, this is how much money I spent on a childcare expenditure without listing the name and the address of that childcare center. If you can do that, that would be immensely helpful.
I, I agree with her. Um, I, when you do your expense report, if there could be an exception at, to removing the location of a childcare facility, um, I think that would be great in for, you know, security reasons that we just heard about. And also you asked earlier, you know, how can we inform candidates about the rules? Um, you know, I got lovely emails from the FEC, automated ones. And so I think it would be great if, once you, uh, filed to run for office, you get an automated email just listing out what all the rules are. Um, and so, I mean, I was, I, I hired a compliance firm, so they, you know, walked me through all those things, but I understand not everyone does that. And so, um, if you just want to make sure you're covering all your bases, an automatic email would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've gotten warnings that I'm not close enough to the mic, but it will only stretch so far. Okay? Um, so, uh, in the previous panel, if you were here, there were a lot of witnesses that testified that they thought the cap at the minimum office holder salary of one hundred and seventy-four was the way to go. So one of those arguments for that cap is during a campaign, while you as a challenger are struggling financial-wise, that incumbent is still collecting a salary, a full salary, full benefits and everything else. So I want to see if you all can tell me in your experience, what was that incumbent doing while you were campaigning? Um, could, do you, do you know what they were doing?
I can, I can speak to that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I had, um, two different, uh, incumbents due to, uh, redistricting. And, um, they were doing absolutely nothing. They were both already rich. Uh, the person who is representing the TN seven is worth over thirty million dollars.
Let me leave this question for you then. I'm going to play this. Was that incumbent also campaigning? They might not have been to your satisfaction or your level of.
Okay, I was about to say, I need some clarity in what you mean by campaigning.
Were they engaged in campaigning?
Did they open the office? Yes. Did they have a campaign manager? Yes. You know, uh, did they do any debates? No. Did they spend, um, forty hours of call time like the majority of us did, just trying to make ends meet? No, none of those things.
Anyone else's experience, what the incumbent was doing?
I want, I would like to answer this question. My incumbent was writing spy novels, literally multiple spy novels. And he wasn't holding town halls. In fact, I, I organized a town hall for him and he refused to show up. And even before that, I had a protest and I asked for a meeting with him and they told me to come in at three thirty that day and I got there and they had locked the doors and sent the staff home. And I had a very large protest in front of his office, so he agreed to meet with me. When I asked if he would hold a town hall, he told me a town hall would only diminish democracy. That was his exact quote. It would diminish democracy. He had been in office since I was twelve. He wasn't campaigning. He did not need to campaign. He had not shown up to a debate in eight years. When I ran against him, he showed up to five debates. But he didn't have to campaign. He took a salary. He didn't really introduce anything great in terms of legislation. He was voting to defund Planned Parenthood seventeen times. And he was writing spy novels. I made him have to step up to campaign, but he didn't have to do very much because everyone knew who he was. So he was taking a salary and not killing himself. He wasn't doing forty hours of call time. He called a few donors that had been his donors forever. We actually outraised him. When I first started, he had over three million dollars in his war chest, three million dollars. I had no clue how I was going to fight, but we outraised him because we did the work and he did not.
May I say one more thing? Um, and this is for Commissioner Dickerson. When I was working at FedEx, um, there was an individual, um, white cisgender male. Uh, he was from rural Tennessee. Uh, his brother was the first person in their family to get into college. He got into Cal Polytech, I believe, MIT of the West Coast, but he didn't get a scholarship. So him being a good big brother, he decided to take a job. And, uh, one of his frustrations is that because we were from different sides, I'm clearly, uh, a Democrat. Um, he was, he voted, uh, Republican a lot. He was irritated because his understanding is that his party took care of working class people. He was so frustrated that he wanted to run for office. He could not run for office because he too was part of the working class. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Then when we talk about inequity, does it always impact people of color? Absolutely. But this is a socioeconomic issue of representation. You know, so asking us if we have the answers to how to fix all of the legalities of this, we don't have those answers. But what we are asking you to do is to take special consideration that we are in trouble across this country. And the big part of the reason why we're in trouble is because we do not have accurate representation in our highest levels of office.
Very hard to follow that up. Um, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Broussard. I mean, I'm sorry. What? Commissioner Longhoff.
We, we look alike. It's okay. Um, I'm always honored to be mistaken for Commissioner Broussard. Um, one of the, um, one of the issues that I raised this morning because of the legal constructs that we have to operate under is, uh, the issue of corruption. Um, Supreme Court tells us that that has to be the, the fundamental principle that we follow in, in all of our rulemaking is that, um, our mission is to prevent corruption and we can't really justify much regulation other than as an effort to, uh, prevent corruption. So out of all your experiences, I would be interested in hearing from you how you think, um, uh, the kinds of rules that we've been talking about today would enhance our ability to prevent corruption, given again, the, um, very pertinent question that the chair raised earlier about the concern about, um, the potential for grifters. But I'd like to address it in a, you know, a, a broader fashion if you could.
Um, Mr. Ho.
Uh, you know, I don't know whether or not there are instances of candidates uh, using their earned income as salary and then adjusting that or fabricating it or exaggerating it to take more. Um, I think when you're going to have, if you have, as, as, as being recommended, you're going to have a, a line entry on your reporting saying this was the candidate's salary for the month, a thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred dollars, six thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, whatever. It'll be very clear. I think most of the, the corruption you've seen, and I'm thinking of one member of Congress in particular, it was for using campaign funds to take his girlfriend to a hotel for the weekend and then expensing that as a campaign expense. So I, I think there's a forensic nature, or forensic nature required to find this corruption that relies on looking into the reporting, matching up days and times, seeing whether or not the expenses that are being utilized are being utilized for actual campaign expenses or for taking your mistress to a hotel. Um, I think the fact that the straightforward payment of a salary, the straightforward payment of healthcare expenses is clear. Uh, while the other expenses, I think, is where you find the corruption. That's where you find the graph. That's where you find the ability for people to fabricate expenses or to make things up or to exaggerate or to claim that this trip was not, what was, it was a campaign trip when in fact it was a, a pleasure trip. So I, I, I don't really see the danger in, you know, if I was to, uh, uh, be paid uh, three thousand, five thousand, seven thousand dollars a month, whatever it comes to for a candidate's salary, that's a clear straight line, straight line item on my reporting. That's very clear. I really do think the danger of the corruption lies in all the myriad receipts and expenditures uh, that a campaign goes through. Certainly if I was going to conduct, if I was going to, uh, be on the take, that's how I would do it rather than doing something that's so obvious and glaring.
Hi, Commissioner. Uh, so I, I want to make sure that I'm answering your question as well. So I, we have a transparency mechanism in, in the sense that we do, you know, quarterly reports. So after you, you know, file for candidacy and you do your first report, you would see how much you're taking in, um, with, you know, how much money you've raised and how much salary benefits you've been taking in. Um, this is extremely public. You know, if you wanted to grift, this is not it. So I, I would say that people would quickly find out if you, if this is something that you were using, taking advantage of um, and not, and would discontinue to give you money, right? And so, um, I think that the reason that candidates that who end up raising more money, um, is because, what I'm trying to say is like, your ability to raise money is dependent on whether or not you're running a good campaign and people are not going to give you money if they see you're, you're clearly just taking the money and paying yourself. So I, I don't think it would be a lasting grift if someone were to even are taking it.
There is a lot of corruption among current congress members who are using insider information to trade stocks and get wealthy. I actually think that there can be an argument made that passing all of these proposed rules could combat that corruption because the power of incumbency is strong. People who are in office for long periods of time don't get a lot of challengers. And if they do, it's so difficult for those people to actually prove that they have the political willpower and the ability to raise the money to take on somebody who has been in office.
and the ability to raise the money to take on somebody who has been in office for decades. It will actually combat that corruption that exists among electeds because now more people will be able to step up and run against that person. More people will have the opportunity to run and to point out the corruption that already exists among our current congress members. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the points that I wanted to make, it's actually I had written it down from Open Secrets. In the past 20 years, the House reelection rate is an average of 94%. Right? So we have a lot of people who just keep getting elected year after year after year. And if we're talking about new candidates, new people who are coming to the stage trying to actually fight for real representation for their communities, and we're talking about grifting and corruption in those circumstances, people who really want to do that are going to try to do it anyways. But stopping real candidates who have to step away from their jobs, who are doing call time, who are working 80 hours a week and not having an income to be able to support themselves, that's not where the corruption is happening.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Can I make a quick comment to a question that Commissioner Broussard asked earlier about what the incumbent was doing? So I ran in an open seat. It was a six-way primary, majority minority district, working class community. And out of the six, one of them was a millionaire. And I believe at the time, and I still believe this, that the person that truly reflected the shared lived experiences of that community did not get elected and instead, out of the six candidates, it was the millionaire that was able to successfully win the primary. And so I just bring that up because it's important that we have more economic diversity in Congress and we have more people that run for office from working class backgrounds. And so these proposed rule changes and the ones that I mentioned in my comments would make it easier for more working people to run for office in the first place.
Ms. Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So each of you ran for the House. I think if I got that correct. Senate? Okay, so one run for Senate. Did you all fill out, you all filled out disclosure forms to either the House or Senate ethics with regard to income that you currently make? Which I think is a good process, by the way. Do you feel comfortable with where the current rules are right now? That in order to take a salary, you would have to turn over not just the disclosures that you do to the Congress, but turning over tax records that could verify what your income is?
I am personally in favor of them. I think it helps with accountability, with transparency, making sure that there would be any potential offsets from other earned income that would be able to plan to, for example, if you were to go with a minimum office holder salary. So I think that process can be improved slightly because it's also still a little bit complicated, even as someone from the financial industry and who, you know, works in that sector. So I don't think it's necessarily the most straightforward and I could imagine for other candidates who might not have that background, that it would be even more complicated. That being said, if there was a straightforward way to be able to share and just make your background a lot more transparent, I think that's something that we're all very much in support of.
Now, I know, Ms. Shirley, you said that we may not necessarily want to look at just the last year, but maybe look at two or three years past. Would you be comfortable with the Federal Election Commission receiving your IRS documents and looking over your last three years' tax returns?
I have no problem. I think it's great to be able to get that information. I don't think that the salary should be based off of it, though. I have no problem submitting tax documents, but you could have been a stay-at-home mother for the last three years. You could be raising children. You could have a medical issue that didn't allow you to work. That shouldn't preclude you from running for office and being able to support yourself and your family while doing so.
So what kind of documentation do you think would be in that type of situation for that type of person? What would be the appropriate type of information that we could ask for that would allow us to just do some verifications of those type of things?
You still have to file your taxes. So I think taking your tax documents is perfectly fine. I just don't think that the ability to take a salary should be based off of your income before. But yes, you should absolutely file your, turn over your tax documents.
Yes, Commissioner Broussard.
One thing that we haven't talked about among this panel is if you lost the election, should you still be able to, for at least maybe 60 days, be able to continue to collect a salary for a wind down period? Well, I want your thoughts on that. But were you still kind of tying up the campaign after Election Day? And how long did it take for you to kind of tie those nuts and bolts together and everything? So what about that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Broussard, for asking that question. Yes. As an individual who ran for 19 total months from beginning to the Election Day and a person who was unsuccessful in winning my bid for Congress, yes, I was tired. I was drained. I'd give everything I possibly had, you know, to show up well for those who wanted me as their representative. It took me at least 60 days to even think about how to even start tying those nuts and bolts back together. So absolutely in favor of them.
I would also wanted to add that I think would be, look, I think it'd be, in theory, I think it'd be great if, let's say you lose and you get 30, 60 days, the ability to still draw a salary. But at that point, if you run a competitive campaign, you don't have any money left over. If anything, you're in debt. I mean, you owe some lenders some checks here and there. So you can make that, that could be a rule and I think that would help some people, but I don't think that a lot of people will actually have any money left at that point.
Yes, Mr. Hough.
If I can go back to Commissioner Trainers' comment about, or question about the Senate Ethics Committee. I wasn't aware I had to file with the Senate Ethics Committee until late in the campaign. And then because then I didn't make the ballot, and I'm still uncertain whether or not I missed a deadline or not, since I wasn't on the ballot until almost the end of August, by the time I sent the information into the Senate, I never received a reply. So just to let you know where I was with that. But that goes to the overall issue that has been spoken about before. As a first-time candidate, as an outsider, it's not, there's no checklist to go through to get yourself started. And so you have rules for the FPC, you have rules for the IRS, you have rules for the Senate, you have rules for the House, and there's not one central point to go to that clearly says what your requirements are for starting a campaign, running a campaign. It will tell you to go check with the Senate Ethics Committee. The FPC will stay on the website, check with the IRS. The IRS will stay, check with the FDC. And sometimes they contradict each other. So I think that's one thing that can be done better in terms of just articulating what the requirements are, particularly for your first-time candidates. In terms of wind down, yes, absolutely. I paid my staff through the end of November. And this is where I think a lot of us who are candidates kind of see this as being very hazy, right? As a candidate is somehow something that is on a pedestal, that we are not, we are somehow above the point of being paid, that we are principled. And that's why we're running as opposed to staff who are paid. And meanwhile, you're doing as much work, I want to say that my staff did a lot more work than I did. But you know, I mean, for most candidates, they're doing as much work as their staff are. But somehow they're in a different compartment, a different box than the staff when you are all running on the same campaign. And that distinction, I think, is something that when you're running a campaign, you really see, why am I being treated differently for this than the staff are? So I think the wind down part was something that I think certainly a salary should go through that, whether it's 30 days, 60 days. You know, I would, I would, I would say through the end of the calendar year is probably appropriate.
I'll just quickly add, just from personal experience, you will have spent down your money in most cases. So there's not actually going to be a lot of campaign funds left. That being said, I think for it to be allowed in the rules to have those 30 to 60 days post a campaign for candidates that win and lose, right? It's not just about us in certain situations, but it's also for candidates that may have won an election, might not be taking office until, you know, potentially another calendar month or two. And so I do think that it is beneficial to be able to sort of bridge that gap. We were specifically working for about 45 more days after the election to wind down all the operations, to submit our final reports, to put out press releases, to issue, you know, statements on social media, things like that. So things don't end on Election Day. And I think it's important to consider the sort of the after effects of running for office. And that also means that you can't start the next day with a new job, right? That's also not how, you know, even getting a job works. And so being able to support candidates who are from working class backgrounds to really push for representation, I think is something that I also almost want to pose as a question to the commission as in, what, what is the purpose of these new rules, right? Is it to ensure a more fair and better democracy and make sure that we have people all walks of life that are able to actually run? Is it to stop corruption? Who are we really trying to support and what are we trying to stop? So it's a question that I wanted to pose.
I wanted to just revisit the comment I made earlier. When you, let's say if you lose, you are in a hole afterwards financially. It's extremely hard to get back up. And personally, I went through it and I think we all did here. With that being said, if it's permissible to continue to raise money 30 to 60 days after you lose your campaign, that could be seen as like a debt retirement where if it's okay per the rules, that could be a way that candidates could compensate themselves. Now, if they are doing that, then I feel like if you're a candidate that has lost, you would have to be upfront with your donors saying that this is why I'm raising this money because clearly you've already lost your campaign. So that could be a form of relief until, you know, candidates can figure out how to pick themselves back up after they lose. And also to add on to, if you win your campaign, I think that there is that gap period. And I saw Congressman Frost talk about this. After he won, there was, you know, he didn't, struggled with employment and didn't have the income that he needed. And so I think that you should be able to still draw a salary until you're sworn in.
I would just like to echo what all of my co-panelists said. We paid our staff until the end of November and we had $10,000 left. If you run a successful campaign, you are out of money by the time Election Day happens. I will tell you that I did not realize, this was something I learned the last week of my campaign, that if you go into debt, it's your personal debt. And I had no idea. And my campaign manager made a mistake where she was looking through the budget and she said, oops, we need another $50,000 to get through the next day. My husband started to do call time with us when we both realized that that was it, we were going to be in debt. And we sat and we did call time. And on GOTV weekend, when I wanted to be out knocking on doors, we did call time to cover that debt. And then there was a little bit more that we had to raise. So I fully support anybody who wins, being able to continue to take a salary if there are funds left until they actually start to take a salary. I also support if you lose to be able to, but it's very difficult. And the people who end up in debt right now, as Senator Islam said, you can actually continue to raise funds to cover that campaign debt. It's really difficult. I've talked to so many candidates, you can't continue to do it. And they, I've talked to a lot of people who've ended up $100,000 personally in debt. This is why we should have publicly financed elections, but that's, that's for a different committee. But it makes, it's scary. It's a risk that you take. If you decide to run for office and your campaign spends more money than you earned, you are on the hook personally.
I do just want to, you know, make just an important comment for anybody who is running for office that circumstances are all different depending on how your campaign takes on money. It is not always the case that your campaign's debt is your personal debt. So there may be certain circumstances where that may happen, but oftentimes it is not. So talk to your lawyers, folks, or give the FEC a call and somebody can talk you through it. But with that, I think we're going to do one more question. We're wrapping up here.
Commissioner Dixon also had one last question. This just goes to disclosure. I mean, I think we've talked a lot about how all of this would be disclosed. So my question is, do you think the current disclosure rules are adequate for this? Or should there be some special disclosure if somebody is taking a salary from their campaign to make sure that, you know, everybody's on notice that that's where the money's going to be going, or some of the money's going to be gone?
I think the current disclosure rules are sufficient. And you can just go online and look up the FDC expense report. And then line by line, you can just see how much candidate has taken for salary benefits or healthcare or childcare.
Yep, I would agree with Senator Islam.
Agreed as well.
I think you make it clear on the reporting, it's a separate schedule, a separate box, if you will. Very overt, very bright, put it in a different color if you want, but this way it's out there, it's open. That, I think, as we were talking about before, reduces the chance for corruption or graft or stealing. But make it very clear. And the same with healthcare and childcare expenses as well. Find a way to redact that private information, but you make it clear it's overt. But then by doing that, you're normalizing it. Right? You know, so many of us, my fellow panelists talked about the shame, the fear, the concern about taking a salary. Normalize it. Make it out there. Make it clear. Make it known that this is what people do when they run campaigns. They get paid a salary. And by doing that, I think you're further expanding the pool of people who'll be willing to come into and try and run for public office.
Wonderful.
Madam Chair, I think we have two minutes. You can see how much credibility I have for short questions up here. Just a quick question for Senator Islam. The, one of the hardest things that we deal with on a tactical level is the interaction between state and federal law. And so directing it to you as a state office holder. Do you have any practical concerns about how this would play for incumbent office holders? Whether it's state ethics rules and outside income by, you know, state senators or, you know, any other part of the state law that you have to deal with every day as a state senator? Do you have thoughts of the interaction there or a place you would point us as a commission for expertise on that point?
I'm trying to understand your question. So you're, you.
Sure. So imagine that we pass a rule that says you can pay yourself a million dollars a year, whatever you want to do. You can pay it whenever you want. If you can raise the money, you can spend it personally. Imagine that's the rule. That won't be the rule. But imagine that's the rule. Presumably as a state senator, Georgia state law is going to have something to say about that.
I don't know why they would because this is, this rulemaking change is strictly for federal candidates. So I don't think that Georgia law, state law, what, because it's, and I want to make sure I'm also answering this question correctly, is Georgia state law separate from the federal laws? They're separate, you know, finance rules. So I don't think, they don't intermingle.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm glad that Commissioner Dickerson asked you that and didn't ask me about Georgia law and the Georgia Ethics and Transparency Commission, for which I could answer all these questions another time. But yes, you are certainly right there on this, that there are separate issues. But of course, if you're running a, you know, state senator in Georgia, you're going to have your own ethics rules that may or not apply. And as a state senator, it's your, you know, responsibility to know what outside funding you can or cannot take. So thank you for that. We can certainly talk about the Georgia Campaign Finance Law any day of the week. So with that, I really want to thank everybody. I want to thank all of our panelists, this afternoon panel, this morning panel, all of our staff. Thank you all. From everything from getting this NPRM in to putting this hearing on, it is a ton of work. But we're thrilled to do it. It's also really great to see some people in the audience and hopefully there are some people watching at home. But the FEC is absolutely open for business and we are here and we like when people interact with us. So as for the next steps, if you want to submit supplemental information, this is open to everybody. So if anybody heard something here and that they want to submit some additional supplemental information to support the testimony or any of, anything else, you can do so for up to a week from now, which is the close of business on Wednesday, March 29th. For all of our panelists, you can be on the lookout for an email from the policy office with some instructions on how you can provide some additional materials. So with that, again, thank you so much. Thank you all for your experience and we will now adjourn.
Stand by.